I'm Michael O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, and welcome to tonight's, December 16th, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the roll, voting on my right.
Dominic Smigalino, alternate.
Dominic, the nature present.
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
Ian Ambrosi, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayne, Vice Chairman.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Joe Chapman, Planning Administrator.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like a motion to add an item to the agenda.
I make a motion to add a bond release, SUB 2019-01104 Elm Street.
I have a motion, I need a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? For those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or is against. The aye is habitable. Add this under other business as number one. Tonight is a public hearing. Before the public hearing, if there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission on any item or any concerns that they have, that they think that we should be aware of pertaining to anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please come forward, identify yourself.
Good evening, I'm Lois Spence from the United Hartford Drive. I was listening at the last meeting, and I heard that the majority of commissioners wanted to go toward totally in-person whenever they could. And I would like to ask you to continue this open hybrid form as long as humanly possible. First of all, everybody, only other commissions in town are doing that. And it opens it up to a whole variety of people that would like to be here, but necessarily can't. There's the guy that's got to be home with his dog because his wife is at another meeting, but he would like to be here if he can't do it. There's the mother that's got to stay home with her kids, that wants to know what's going on with the quarry next to her house. These are all people that are interested in knowing what's going on. They may not be commenting, but they want to know what's going on. So as long as you have the opportunity and technology to share with people, I think it would behoove you to do so. And it also looks a little bit less like you're hiding something. You're the only commission in town that wants to go fully in-person, and everybody else is fully remote or fully hybrid. It just looks like it doesn't have a good aura. So I wanted to just put that two cents out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Mr. Chairman.
We're not the only commission, actually, that is going or voted to go live in person online. Is there anyone online that would like to comment?
Yes, there is. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is BJ Hall. I'm with the Inland-Wetland Commission, but speaking tonight as a private citizen. At your last meeting, the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission submitted a memorandum to you that I would like to support. Their request was that you consider two drafts of proposed regulations. These are for riparian buffers, and the other is regarding native plant requirements. Having read both of these and understanding the content, I would urge you to meet with the Conservation and Water Resources Commission and give these serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there any other members of the audience, online or in person, that would like to address the commission tonight? If not, then we'll move on to our public hearing agenda. Our one and only public hearing tonight is an excavation and fill permit, EFP 2021-03, which is 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. This is continued from 11/18/2021. And Rick, do we have any additional items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit Number Five, Engineering Comments. Exhibit Number Six, Intervener Submission. And Exhibit Number Seven, From Connecticut Deep. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
For the applicant tonight?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional in the state of Connecticut with the engineering office located in 501 Main Street, right here in Monroe. So just for tonight, what we wanted to do first was, we know that the intervener needs an opportunity to do their presentation. But first, we wanted to just simply provide a brief presentation in response to some of Commissioner Ambrosi's questions and comments from the last hearing. He had raised a number of concerns about the potential impact to the groundwater for the area where we'll be placing some of those needed fill materials below the elevation of groundwater. So Derek Jones, our LEP is available on the phone. I wanted to have him run through some additional testing he did, and I actually do want to submit, he's going to give a presentation about his findings and address Commissioner Ambrosi's questions, and he has a summary I just want to give to the commission as well. And we did provide, we just provided a copy of this to the interveners attorney, Mr. Green. Just to kind of prep for Derek, so just to refresh everyone's recollection, there were a lot of questions about, you know, our intent for this is to the deepest part of the hole that requires the deepest fill, in the area that is, would be below the natural groundwater elevation. Our intent is to pump that out and then to place native materials in that hole that are native on-site, essentially a lot of those are filled and some overburdened. So Derek, in response to some of the questions last week, there was concerns that that material would affect the pH of the groundwater, if there'd be any impact to potential nutabilities from metals or minerals in that material. So Derek did some additional analytical testing, and is going to be able to provide some responses to those comments and concerns raised. So with that, I'll hand it over to Derek.
Yes, hi, it's Derek Jones with WSP in Shelton, Connecticut. I hope everyone can hear me.
Derek, just, did you just say your qualifications, you're a licensed environmental professional?
Right, yes, I'm a licensed environmental professional with WSP with a little over 20 years' experience in Connecticut, doing environmental assessment remediation. So we were asked to evaluate the quarry screenings and rock dust material that, there's a couple large stockpiles of the materials at the site. And what we did was, we collected composite samples of the stockpile, and to provide some comparison, we took some samples of the native soils from the site as well, undisturbed soils in a wooded area, and subjected them to similar analyses. We did chemical and physical testing of the screenings, and again, there were no evidence of, you know, chemical impacts, you know, from a release of any sort. As far as the physical testing goes, there are naturally occurring metals in both, similar concentrations in both the rock screening material and the background soils, undisturbed natural soils at the site. Similar concentrations of metals, similar sieve analyses, they're both primarily sand. The screenings have a smaller percentage of finds than the native soils, about 7.7% as opposed to 11.9% in the native soils. And the total organic carbon of the materials, the rock dust is substantially lower than the background soils. Very low for any type of soil, really, because it's, you know, primarily ground-up rock. And so with all these together, it's our conclusion that using the quarry screenings rock dust isn't going to have any negative impact on the groundwater relative to a similar soil of any other type of, you know, naturally occurring material, similar to what's on-site. We'd basically be having the same conditions using natural soil as opposed to rock screenings. With that, I'll hand it back to Kevin, or to any questions that I might be able to respond to.
Yeah, when you put the, well, whatever is the stone dust into groundwater, that doesn't increase the temperature or the pH or the iron?
Right, so basically, we analyzed the materials for iron as well. There's not an inordinately high amount of iron, it's right in line with naturally occurring We don't expect any changes in the geochemistry that would be abnormal to any, what we say in our letter is that whenever you do filling of an open water body that's in equilibrium with the atmosphere, you're going to have minor fluctuations in the groundwater geochemistry, no matter what the material is, just because it's not in contact, as in constant contact with the atmosphere when it's buried. So aside from those changes you would get from filling it with anything, we don't see any indication that there'd be any difference from using this material or any other, you know, commonly used type of fill.
Okay, so you say it won't increase the, it won't increase the temperature of the water, nor will it increase the iron content in the water?
So iron is naturally soluble, and it's, any material you put in the water, it will have iron in it, and the iron will dissolve to some point of equilibrium, because iron is naturally present in groundwater. So there would be, no matter what material is put in the water, you're going to have iron dissolving. Not to the point where you would expect any sort of an impact to the groundwater.
All right, because I was just concerned about, because it's being a GAA water site, that, you know, that's the most sensitive site that we have in Connecticut. And I was just wondering that, because I did a little reading up on, when you mix that stuff in there, it could increase the iron and the temperature of the water.
Once the site reaches equilibrium, you know, after several months, there won't be any increased iron, it'll just be what's in the groundwater everywhere.
So you're saying that it'll increase it, but then after a while, it'll dissipate?
Well, it'll just, it's hard to say that it won't increase, because when you put anything in that water, the iron will dissolve to some extent. But it's not going to be raising the concentration of iron in the groundwater system as a whole. It will be what it is now.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Bob Grishellenberg, our staff attorney, online.
So those were the only things that we wanted to kind of touch on first. We wanted to be responsive to Commissioner Ambrosi's questions from the last hearing. We know that the intervener is prepared to give a presentation, we're anxious to hear it, so we want him to have a chance to present, and then we'll come back up and respond to them, answer any other questions that the commission may have.
Okay.
Oh. Yes.
And for the intervener, we have...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Joel Green, for the record, from offices of Green and Gross, on behalf of the intervener, Peter Metropolis, trustee. I can first off say that it's a great pleasure to appear before you live, and while I agree that your hearings, as was stated during a public comment, that it is a needed convenience to have meetings be hybrid, and I agree with those comments. I think there's a lot lost with not being in the world, but I guess virtual's the next best thing. So I also wanted to thank the commission for your courtesy of keeping the hearing open for our request, and I do know that this commission had a lot of questions, and wanted to express the desire to speak and ask some questions of Evan Glass of Alta Environmental Corp. I did submit a rather lengthy letter this afternoon, late this afternoon, I apologize for that, and I just want to explain that Mr. Glass had worked on a rather lengthy presentation this evening, and it was our thought, and I had determined that it made sense to submit his report, his comments largely in writing for you, because I thought it would be a benefit to have them in writing. And Mr. Glass and I had determined that what he will do is, he will appear this evening, and he will just touch on the highlights. So what was going to be a very lengthy presentation will be a much shorter presentation this evening, just touching on the high points of his report and to answer the questions that you have. Then I have some comments that I'll follow up with. But the question asked at the last meeting of the commission pertaining to, and I was asked how I would define clean fill, and there was a lot of discussion about that at the last hearing, and I deferred to Mr. Glass. And so what I'd like to do is just ask Mr. Glass, first of all, for the record this evening, to describe his education, training, and experience, just so that it's in the record. And then I would ask him to address directly the question that was asked by the commission regarding the definition of clean fill and how that impacts our position in asking the commission to deny this application or hold the matter open. And then Mr. Glass will just go through the high points of his report, and I think we can have a pretty efficient presentation and move along pretty quickly. So I see Mr. Glass is there on screen, and Evan, if you could just begin by describing your education, training, and experience, so that it's in the record, I would appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, Chairman O'Reilly, and other commissioners. It's been about a year before I've been before you, so thank you for having me. For the record, my name is Evan Glass. I am a hydrogeologist and licensed environmental professional with Alta Environmental Corporation in Colchester, Connecticut. I have a bachelor's degree in geology and a master's degree in geology with a specialty in hydrogeology, computer modeling, and I have been working in the environmental field in Connecticut since the, since 1980s, the early 1980s, and have been on the board of the EPOC, which is the Professional Society of LEPs, and am a board member now, a past president, and those are my fundamental credentials. I don't, I'm here on behalf of the intervener, Mr. Peter Metropolis, and I did notice that Derek had asked if there were any questions. I do have some questions of him, so I was wondering if now would be the appropriate time, while he's here, for me to ask him just a few brief questions on his additional testing that he did.
So I was going to actually address that as well, and I know, you know, it's hard to get things done these days, and it's under these COVID conditions, and I know that we met last month, and I understand that the applicant produced this letter this evening. We haven't had a chance to review it, it's understandable that Mr. Glass would have some questions on it, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, either, and we haven't had a chance to review the report, and I don't know that it's on the portal. I didn't see it, I don't see it today.
Which letter is that?
There's a letter that Mr. Finn was good enough to provide me with, from WSP, that was the subject of the presentation by the applicant.
To the counsel, yeah, that's the letter, that's essentially the summary of what Derek Jones just presented.
So we just got that.
It's a letter dated December 16th, to Rocket LLC, Attention, Mr. Carp. And the applicant was, did provide me with copies this evening, but I haven't had a chance to read it, and I certainly haven't had a chance to share it with our consultants. And I know, I doubt the commission's had a chance to read it either, so.
I'll see it. No, we, he's always got it.
So I just, based on his presentation, I had a few just basic questions that I think could clear things up. Is it appropriate for me to ask him through you those questions?
Last questions to have right now.
So what are you asking for now?
I think that, I think that Mr. Glass would like to ask questions regarding the presentations you think by WSP.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate this evening, or if this matter is continued, we could review the letter and ask them that.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Derek, how many?
Sorry, Evan, just for a second, I think, if I may, I think the more efficient procedure is for Mr. Glass to list his questions, and then we will respond to them, not to sort of have a give and take at this point. That's a much more efficient way. Evan can ask his questions, Derek can formulate his answers, and then he will provide those answers.
All right, why don't we do it that way?
Thank you.
I viewed the recorded video of the last meeting of 18 November, and I have some brief informational statements about the application, some recommendations, and then some very basic questions for the applicant's team, including Derek and Mr. Solely and Mr. Carp. So the quality, informational statements, I'll just say that the applicant has maintained that the fill at the site has been extensively investigated and exhaustively tested. I believe that was Attorney Finn's characterization, and I do not agree with that at all. The WSP's testing of the fill materials that were at the site before the Carp era, we'll call them the Kimball era, fill was at one sample for approximately 25 to 3,500 cubic yards. And the applicant's own recommendation for testing new material coming in is much more frequent testing, one sample for 250 cubic yards, an order of magnitude difference. So it seems to be that there is sort of a double standard between those two types of, those two eras of fill, the Kimball era and the Carp era. Back in 2020, Mr. Jebson from DEP had asked for the testing for the Carp, for the Kimball era fill, and that was never received by DEP, and I believe it still has not been received by the DEP, and certainly, we have not had a chance to take a look at it. I have the same comment with regard to groundwater quality. WSP has maintained that the fill at the site is not impacting groundwater, but very simply, not too hard to understand, the monitoring wells they have are not in the area of the fill, they're very far away, and they don't have contour maps even to show that the area of the fill is contributing water to those two wells, just two wells for this very big project, which WSP would, if you take a look at all their projects that they have in Connecticut, I bet they don't have a handful of projects that have two wells. Usually you have many, many wells on a project of this size. The applicant did eventually submit information on the Carp era fill. Much of this seems to be in the form of pre-demolition building surveys, not particularly related to any soil that would come up, that seems to be, that's been brought to the site. There seems to be very little testing for the soil that's come onto the site. And regarding this information, as you know, the materials from the 57 Gower Road property were included, or largely were tar-coated cinder block, and cinder block is not a clean fill constituent, not in the definition of DEP clean fill, and it's at the site, and that has implications. Soil from an Amazon site in Trumbull is represented by just one sample. We understand that over 1,000 truckloads of material were brought to the quarry from an Amazon warehouse site in Trumbull at 7120 Main Street, Trumbull. I think this is the same site, I'm not sure, but if it is, that site is a site of a landfill, where a landfill, you know, was next door, encroached, and the boring logs for that site show garbage as shallow as 15 feet below ground surface. And that information is in the appendix to the report that was referenced before. Material from Wade's Garage came to this site, and that is an auto body, that's an auto facility, of course, and that's listed in the applicant's own material assessment procedure as a high-risk usage that'd be automatically rejected, yet it's here. So these things are just cause for concern, and I think point to the need for, or my recommendation, for this commission to hire its own LEP to take a look at this and advise the commission. Don't rely just on me, of course, I'm here on behalf of the intervener, but I do encourage you to get your own independent LEP to guide you. The overburdened soils from the rock dust that Derek Jones spoke about, I'll have some questions at the end for him, if you'd like, but that was tested prior to this testing. There was only one other sample tested of that material, and I understand the estimate that Kevin Solely gave for that was about 118,000 cubic yards, so that's a testing frequency of one sample for 118,000 cubic yards, not an adequate testing frequency, in my opinion, by any means. And WSP conducted no leachability testing for that soil. The primary concern that some commission members have on this, and that I have for this soil, is that it could leach metals to groundwater. The, literally, the acid test for determining leachability, the leachability test, it was not done before the most recent testing, and as I understand Derek's summary, it still has not been done. They've done everything except the most direct test to answer the question. If this material turns out to be leachable and is not suitable to be put in the bottom of the hole below the water table, there's still a very good use for it at this site, and that is as like a cushion base material underneath the polyline. I will note that with respect to putting fill below the water table, the most conventional construction practice is to use one and a half to two-inch crushed stone. The town's own LEP, who was opining on behalf of the Inland-Wetlands Commission, Mr. Russ Drenzo, shares his opinion, he stated it at the Inland-Wetlands Commission, and that would be, you know, unquestionably suitable material to go below the water table. The rock flower and mine screenings would not be suitable, in my opinion, unless they were tested directly for leachability, not just an indirect inference, as has been done. And I think just for one sample, again, one per 118,000 cubic yards of material. The water table that it's going to be placed below, that water table has an elevation now, that's the elevation that the engineer is considering is going to remain the same, even though the ground surface is going to be raised by about 50 feet above that water table. Now, when the ground surface gets raised, it's very possible that the water table could be raised, and WSP is well-qualified, I'm sure, to do a calculation of what that water table will be after the ground surface is raised under these design conditions. And I would recommend that you ask the applicant to do that, and then to actually monitor the groundwater. monitor the groundwater as, as the filling progresses, and as it's, and after it's done, to make sure that the material that you want below the water table is below the water table, and the water table doesn't rise above it into material that you don't want the water to be in contact with. The question of clean fill, in the last hearing, there was the comment made that we dispute the DEP definition of clean fill, that's not true, we never dispute it, it's a DEP definition, as, as the attorney mentioned, it's, it's indisputable. It is, it is, it is a definition in the regulation. What we are getting at is that there are materials at the site that simply don't meet that definition, like cinder block, metal, painted asphalt, DEP's mined asphalt less than four inches, coal cleaners, all those things are at this site, and none of those things are in the definition of clean fill. And that has implications for whether the site needs waste permits or not. And in this case, in this instance, I'll indicate my strong recommendation that the, this commission requests or requires the applicant to ask the DEP for a pre-application meeting, so that they can lay out the site history to the DEP, they can lay out the information they have, they can lay out their plans, and they can get benefit of DEP's advice on whether any permits are needed, and whether, what they're, what they're planning on doing and what has already been done at the site is acceptable to DEP. DEP can't do this on their own, DEP won't come to the applicant to do this, the applicant has to come to them with a request for pre-application meeting, you're in the position for, for making It's not clear even now, and this will be one of my questions at the end, if the applicant is planning on bringing in polluted fill. I believe the applicant is maintaining that he is not planning going forward to bring in polluted fill at the site, polluted soil, not polluted fill, polluted soil, definitions are important, I mean polluted soil. Polluted soil is already at the site, it's been brought to the site under both errors, Karp and Kimball errors, but it turns out you can't bring polluted soil from one site to another site without prior DEP approval. And I don't believe that, that, that prior DEP approval has been obtained for any soil that has been brought to this, any polluted soil that has been brought to the site. And that's another reason why it makes sense to have the applicant go to the DEP and say, here's what, here's where we are, here's how we got here, here's where we want to go, let's do this the right way with DEP's expertise. Overall level of DEP engagement. The applicant has tried to maintain that DEP is actively and well-engaged with this project, but it's only been recently that, that the applicant provided information to the DEP, and the DEP has, has indicated that some of that information still requires further review, particularly some samples that have elevated leachable, leachable concentrations of lead. So I recommend that you seek to have DEP engaged to an efficient degree to review and approve the prior and proposed future actions. This is, next thing is actually something new, very new, and, and very significant. There's a new DEP position paper entitled "Affirmative Responsibility to Clean Up Pollution in Connecticut." Prior to this paper, the applicant's environmental attorney was able to and did maintain that the remediation standard regulations of Connecticut did not apply to this site because it was not in a formal DEP remediation program. However, DEP's position paper asserts that there is an affirmative obligation for Connecticut landowners to remediate pollution to the standards in the RSRs. The paper references, among other things, the Water Pollution Control Act, that requires those who are aware of pollution to abate it, and notes that remediation of polluted soil in addition to groundwater is nearly always required because ownership of contaminated soils constitutes maintenance of a condition that is in fact a source of pollution to the waters of the state. It's a lot to digest, it's in my, it's in my report, and it is new and significant. Comments on jurisdiction have been made. The applicant and its attorney would like you to think that the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission has no jurisdiction over environmental matters in your town of Monroe. The town's LEP, acting on, opining on behalf of the Inland Wetlands Commission, said that the quality of the fill is a planning and zoning matter, and also a DEP matter, not an inland wetlands commission matter. So it has been stated at the last hearing by Attorney Finn, I believe, that the plant, that the Inland Wetlands Commission already vetted the environmental issues having to do with the fill, and that is not true. He also said that the Planning and Zoning Commission already rejected environmental arguments on this project, and I believe that's also not true. I believe what is true is that the planning, is that the Inland Wetlands Commission cited reasons to reject the application and selected those reasons to be non-contaminant-related, possibly to stave off an appeal, but they, I did not find anywhere where they said they rejected the arguments on the environmental merits of the fill or anything else. So it's a bit of a shell game. The Inland Wetlands Commission says it's the planning and zoning's job to figure out the quality of the fill, and the DEP's job. The applicant says it's not your job, the applicant says it's the Inland Wetlands Commission's job and the DEP's job. DEP won't take any action unless it has enough information to enforce against a violation. You can't have enough information unless you do the right testing, and DEP has done a partial assessment, has not completed its assessment, but the buck has to stop somewhere, and it is your town. I have some common sense recommendations, I think prior to considering granting an approval, that you should get LEP summaries of the following for both the Kimball and Karp errors of fill. A brief environmental history, just was it a school, was it an automobile garage, was it a brownfield site, was it a landfill? Which materials were brought from which source sites, were they building materials such as brick and concrete, roadway, or asphalt, or was it soil? And in some cases, it was, you know, brick and concrete, in some cases it was soil. And for the brick and, for the building materials, of course, the abatement activities are pertinent to the building materials, so just, just, you know, lay those out, and indicate the type and the frequency of the testing for the soil with comparison to the natural background concentrations consistent with the applicant's commitment to not receive polluted soil at the site, and indicate where any materials of concern are located and draw conclusions as to the adequacy. Then you'd have a good idea of what's, what's at the site. I recommend that the applicant's proposal to excavate and recompact all existing fill be, be, be done. I trust that they are standing by that commitment. I, of course, recommend getting additional groundwater quality data now and, and as the project progresses in areas of the fill, not, not in areas that are, you know, very distant from the fill. Any groundwater plume will dissipate with distance, as, as Derek will agree, and their wells are at very distant locations relative to the primary areas of fill. I recommend that the, that the material planned to be used is filled below the water table, those mine screenings that Derek talked about, be tested directly for leachability, appears they have not been. I recommend that they quantitatively determine where the water table will be, and then simply verify that with monitoring. I recommend that this commission retain a company that has an LEP, a Connecticut licensed professional engineer and a hydrogeologist to help guide the commission's decisions. Now I have questions, I'll start with my ones for Derek, and then the more general Be glad to listen to answers as the questions are given, or, or at a time of more, whatever you choose. So for Derek, how many, how many samples were collected of the screenings?
We'd like to respond at the end, we'll let him get.
Can you go ahead with?
Yep, okay. So for Derek, it's how many samples were tested of the screenings, how many cubic yards of screenings are there, what is the sampling frequency of samples per cubic yards, and what is the standard test in Connecticut to directly assess leachability, and was that test conducted? For the rest of the team? Why has the applicant not produced the environmental due diligence reports prepared for the site for its purchasing decision? Such information would be expected to pertain to the quality of the fill that existed prior to purchase. Now, the, the Kimball era fill, will the applicant produce those reports? Will the existing fill below grade at the site be excavated and reprocessed and compacted as the applicant previously committed to doing? If so, will the nature and quality of this fill be assessed as that goes on, so that any unaccepted materials that are found can be segregated for off-site disposal? Seems like a common sense thing to do if you're digging it up anyway. Does the applicant intend to import DEP-defined polluted soil? What will the applicant do with the existing polluted soil at the site? How will the stockpiles of asphalt fragments at the site be managed? Will they be used as subbase between competent pavement, or just as asphalt-gravel roadways that are subject to erosion? Will the applicant test the native overburden materials for leachability and check for non-native constituents in that material? What are the numerical acceptance criteria, the concentration limits for the soil planned to be brought to the quarry? If the goal is for only uncontaminated soil to be brought in, which appears to be what the applicant is proposing, then the concentration limit should be representative of natural background conditions. What will become of the soil that DEP identified in its, in its, in this week's letter, December 15, 2001, as remaining under review due to the reported leachable lead concentration? Is the applicant willing to request the DEP application meeting to identify any and all required permits that may be needed and address any other DEP concerns simply due to the size of the project and the planned filling of the quarry, as DEP staff member Frank Agliardo indicated would be appropriate in this instance? Does the applicant plan to impose any kind of a double standard with respect to the Kimball era fill, which has asphalt and brick documented below the water table, a low frequency of testing, and other, you know, not as good quality control measures versus the Karp era fill, which, and the Karp era plans to place only natural soil below the water table, have a greater frequency of testing, and overall a higher, higher quality control measures? Are those two types of fill, two errors in the fill are going to be treated with something of a double standard? So it's my opinion that in the absence of acceptable answers to these questions and additional information, I've indicated that your commission would be at risk of making its decision based on significant data gaps, unresolved questions, and without valuable DEP input. If all the information you deem necessary to make a decision is not available to you, then I'd recommend that you reject the application without prejudice, the applicant can obtain the additional information and resubmit to your consideration. Thank you.
If I may.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Glass.
Attorney Green?
Yes, if I may, I, I don't know if any commissioners want to ask questions of Mr. Glass, or if I can keep going, at the moment, it's up to you, Mr. Jim.
Sure, why don't we go to the commissioners then?
I, I suppose there's just one question I would like to ask Mr. Glass, and that, with your permission, is, again, at the conclusion, I was asked very pointedly what my definition of clean fill was, and what I would ask Mr. Glass to respond in 60 seconds or less in a very pointed way, is a definition, his definition of clean fill in this instance for the benefit of this commission, and I had deferred to him, and I'd like to.
The definition of clean fill that I have been using is the DEP's definition of, of clean fill in the Solid Waste Regulations, the same one that is in the material acceptance procedure of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Now, any of the commissioners that started with my right have questions for Mr. Glass?
Yeah, so are you claiming that there's polluted materials on site currently?
Polluted soil. The DEP defines, the RSR has defined polluted soil as any soil that has any contamination in it at all. So, so soil that has PAHs in it, PAH is, is, is not natural to Connecticut soil, and so when PAHs are there, it means that there's some sort of petroleum in that soil, could be from asphalt, could be from waste oil, could be from, from other petroleum sources, but it's not natural, and its presence indicates pollution. So yes, it's polluted soil at the site.
Thank you.
I have no question right now.
Attorney Green stole my question.
Oh, he did? This is the report we just received from them tonight, this report?
No, that's from last year.
This is from last year, but we just got it today?
No, we got, we received it. No, we got it last year.
When did we get this?
We got this this evening.
See the stamp on it?
From last year, the, that report is from last year.
It says December 16th.
No, wait, he's holding up.
He's holding up this report.
This one was from last year.
That one's from.
This one's from today.
Yes, that's what he's holding up.
Oh, my bad, sorry. This is from today.
And this came from Evan Glass, right?
Yes. Yes.
All right, because I want to read this report before I have any questions, so, I mean, I just got this today.
The ALSA environmental report, wasn't that in packets from last year, Rick? Hasn't this been?
Oh, yeah, that's been circulated.
This has been circulated.
That.
No, not this one.
Not this.
The old one.
This is we just received.
This one.
Has been circulated. You're talking about this one, correct?
WSP. There are two reports that came into the record this evening at this hearing. One is a letter from WSP, a report from WSP regarding the evaluation of the onsite material stated, that was stated in December. It's a three-page document from ALTA dated today.
But I, I have questions, I have my question to hear.
That's what Mr. Glass was just highlighting.
It doesn't make a difference, this is a report, this is a report. No, so that, my questions will be after I read this report, Mr. Glass, so I have to read this report, and there's, there's no way I'm gonna do this tonight.
Understood.
All right, and then I guess he submitted some material too, right, to you?
Correct.
Right.
To the commission.
Right, and was that material, where's that material at?
Letter from WSP dated today.
Okay, those are all I have right now. I mean, I have other questions to ask about the report that came from DEP, but that'll address to the applicant.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Glass?
No questions.
I have a question, what, what are the levels that, what are the levels that are found in the pollutants that are in the soil now, and what specifically are those pollutants?
There's lead, there's PAHs, poly nucleare aromatic hydrocarbons, concentrations of lead ranged up to, let's see if I can quickly find it, it's in my report.
Five milligrams.
A few hundred milligrams per, per kilogram, and PAHs probably totaling a few milligram per kilogram, but WSP did very little sampling. per kilogram, but WSP did very little sampling, and when they did have samples that had, say, asphalt in it, which has the PAHs, they, they elected not to test those samples for, for that analysis. So it's, there's, there's, certainly if you test a, a sample that has any amount of asphalt in it at all, you'll get screaming high levels of, of PAHs on the order of tens of thousands of, of parts per million.
Okay, and based on the levels that are in your report, are, are these levels considered safe or acceptable on any level?
Well, you, you wouldn't, well, you wouldn't put sort of asphalt-containing material below the water table. The direct, there are, there are criteria for direct exposure, and the, the samples that I saw did not exceed those, and there are pollutant mobility criteria, but there are, there are permit implications for having this material on site, and, and my overall assessment is that the amount and type of testing, both soil and groundwater, is not adequate to base a decision. And if DEP took a look at, at the amount of, of the magnitude of this project relative to the amount of data that's out there, my, my expectation is that they would, they would request additional information to make better sure that it's not going to be a problem.
Would it, would it be fair to say that the testing that has been done at this point has produced acceptable levels?
Not entirely. The most recent testing that was, was brought to light came out this week in the DEP letter that you, you received recently indicating concentrations of leachable lead exceeding the pollutant mobility criteria, and that's why DEP has, has continued to assess those results, and has not provided opinion on those yet. So you have exceedances there.
Thank you, that's all I have.
No questions, thank you.
I have no questions either. Do you want to let the applicant answer this?
That would be helpful. Yeah, that would be helpful, and then I'm happy to address the commission now, or, I mean, after the applicant has responded to those questions, or...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think it would, the applicant would prefer to have the interviewer complete the entirety of the presentation, well, then come back, provide answers to these questions to the commission, and then close it out.
I, I understand that the applicant would like that, but I'd like to hear the answers to the questions in making my remarks to the commission, so I don't think it's a big imposition on the applicant to respond to the, the questions that have been asked by Mr. Glass, and then I'm happy to address the question.
Okay, we'll have the applicant answer the questions, and I think Mr. Green can make a concluding remark.
Sure. Do you want me to list the questions one by one, say you don't miss any?
I think they were paying attention.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman O'Reilly. So thank you for the, the presentation by the interviewer, thank you, Mr. Glass, for all your pointed questions. We took a lot of copious notes. I think we can address the majority of all of those comments and concerns and questions, the people who follow up questions asked by the commission. So I'm gonna, some of these, we'll have Derek Jones respond to some of these specific to the leachability questions and some of those items. First, I think I want to actually introduce Attorney Jane Kimball Warren, just to talk about the, because there were a lot of questions and concerns raised about the engagement with DEP, and I wanted to ask Attorney Warren to kind of talk a little bit about her discussion with the DEP, and even actually offer some color to the late letter that they gave, the concerns about some of the fill, and then actually, what actually transpired regarding those tests, so.
Hi, Jane Warren, I'm an attorney with a court in English and have been practicing in the environmental field for 35 years now. I'd like to address some of the allegations raised by Mr. Glass. I think he's done a pretty good job trying to confound all the issues and bring a lot of issues before you, because they frankly have been completely unsuccessful before DEP trying to get DEP to bite and take any action. DEP has been out to the site several times, hasn't found any issues. The emails that we asked that they provide to the commission that I guess was delivered today from Mark Jepson shows, confirms, let me just quote from it, this is Mark Jepson's report of December 15, he says, oh, thank you, he says, in the second paragraph, "We toured the site. There was no visible evidence of any solid waste on the site." Okay, and then the next page, the, the last paragraph, "A review of the analytical results," this is the DEP speaking, this is not me speaking, "regarding the soils used at the site for fill seem to indicate that the soils meet the definition of clean fill." So you, you have a 40-page letter that ALTA submitted today, trying to make all kinds of arguments that the site does not have clean fill, has not accepted clean fill, will not accept clean fill, whatever it is that they're arguing, DEP has said, with two exceptions, that the soils meet the definition of clean fill, two exceptions under review. I'm happy to tell you that those two exceptions for grid logistics and LHG, those soil analytics were provided to DEP because they asked for every bit of soil analytical information that was available to my client. We provided these results, we rejected, these, these loads were rejected, they were not taken to the site. So we will explain that to DEP. These, these analyticals were taken by the, by grid logistics and LHG. We have documentation showing that, thank you very much for running these tests, you didn't meet the standards, we're not accepting this material. So it, they were taken elsewhere, okay, except for seven, so there were 300 loads from grid logistics, 293 were rejected, seven were accepted that were re-sampled again onsite, and we confirmed that they meet all relevant standards. The LHG soil was rejected in its entirety. So that, that addresses most of the allegations raised by Mr. Glass. A couple other things that I just wanted to touch about on, let's see, some of it, let me try to answer some of his questions. He, he makes a lot of hay about the fact that, that materials were taken from auto body shops, auto body repair shops, and Amazon warehouses and whatnot. What was taken from those sites was clean fill. Their building is demolished, sand d waste is expensive to dispose of at sand d locations, so it's segregated. You pull out the recyclable materials, you pull out the clean fill, you don't want to pay to dispose of clean fill as sand d waste. So the fact that the material was taken from sites that had sand d waste go elsewhere is irrelevant. Only clean fill came to this site. We have provided the analytical results to DEP, not only of the materials that have, that were taken to the site, but WSP's soil and groundwater and water analysis. DEP agrees that those materials, and again, Mark Jepson's email or report of, of December 15, says that the analytical results show that the soil meets all relevant standards. Do we need a pre-application meeting with DEP? No, I'm an environmental attorney, I hate to tell my client what permits they need. They have the permits they need. If you go back to Evan Glass's August, I believe, 20th, 2020, 40-page memo that he wrote to the Inland Wetlands Commission, he said that the only permits that we needed for this site were stormwater and water diversion. We have stormwater permits and the water diversion permit, they again went to DEP, filed, they tried every complaint that they can with DEP, spoken with DEP, they've confirmed in writing October 20, I think I testified at the last hearing, they determined that a water diversion permit is not necessary. There is no reason for us to go ask and waste everybody's time at DEP to say, "What permits do we need?" We don't need any permits, we have the permits that we need. Let me see what other questions you've had. See if I can read my notes here. Oh, the polluted soil issue, Evan, Mr. Glass states that we need DEP's permission to take polluted soil from one site to another. I think I've just explained that we didn't take polluted soil from any sites, we took clean fill. The two questions DEP had, those soils were rejected. So polluted soil has not been taken, and these, and from other sites, we don't need DEP's permission to take clean fill, and the DEP has agreed with that. I urge you to read this memo, it's a very brief, one and a half page memo from DEP, supporting what we're saying here now. And I think that's all I can ask.
And just to, just to kind of reiterate, I think Commissioner Weston asked a question about the polluted soils that Mr. Glass referenced, and if they were below criteria and things like that. And I think it's important that, you know, there were assertions made about stuff that was speculative, that was about things that I saw, but there was no actual results or anything that supports that there is contamination on site that requires any level of remediation. And I just want to say that the DEP, as a regulating agency, engages with LEPs, licensed environmental professionals who are fairly highly respected and in charge with protecting the environment, and an LEP has been engaged, Derek Jones is on, is on the line, he'll talk a little bit more in a minute, he prepared a comprehensive soil, subsurface and stockpile investigation for this site, provided this to DEP, the exhaustive testing, and in his conclusion, "WSP did not identify conditions at the site that are indicative of the presence of a source of contamination to groundwater or thereby the onsite wetlands. Evidence of the presence of contaminated materials was not identified within discrete stockpiles. In addition, the stormwater and groundwater-fed surface water body at the site did not exhibit any evidence of impact." This is testing by a professional who is charged with protecting the environment, and they go out and they do testing, and they figure out what needs to be tested, hours testing needs to be done, and they put their license and certification and professional integrity on the line when they do that. That can't be forgotten or watered down by assertions and allegations of things that aren't founded. I think that's important, I think Ms. Warren, Mrs. Warren reiterated that, Mr. Jepson in the DEP letter from yesterday reiterated that. So I just wanted to reiterate that one more time. I guess I wanted to ask Derek, if you, hey Ricky, you can turn the screen off for now. Derek, did you want to respond to any of Evan's questions regarding leachability?
Certainly. Right, so just to go back over quickly what we had done just recently with, with the screenings and the millings, the, we, we did one additional chemical test just to, of a composite sample with a discreet sample for volatiles, a, a 10-point composite from 10 points on the stockpile to add to the previous data set. It was primarily done not to, to, in an attempt to, to achieve some goal of how many samples per cubic yard, but really, we were going to test it for these physical properties, we, we might as well test it for some additional contamination just to, to add some measure of conservative analysis. I know that Mr. Glass had mentioned that, you know, that the RSRs or the remediation standard regulations are now applicable to all sites, and, 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 you know, we've got to comply with them, but nowhere in the remediation standard regulations or the DEP guidance document, including the site characterization guidance document, nowhere in these documents does it say that leachability testing needs to be done for metals that are naturally occurring. In fact, it says in numerous locations that no testing is required, you know, absent of a release. So they, these materials have been extensively tested over the years from numerous projects. I've used these materials from this quarry all, all over the state, it's been tested many, many times, it's, you know, naturally occurring, unimpacted by releases, and never had any problems at all with, with these materials. The, there's never been any contention or any evidence of a release impacting the native soils from this site or the native rock. So plain and simply, there's no justification within these documents that, you know, regulations that Evan Glass is referencing, the remediation standard regulations, that a specific testing regime per cubic yard, or that any testing needs to be done absent of a release. So we've clearly established that these materials are unimpacted, suitable for reuse anywhere in the state. No further testing needs to be done, period. No leachability testing needs to be done, plain and simply. I know Evan has, in his letter, has talked about how, oh, Derek's wrong, because, you know, if you have a petroleum release that mobilizes metals, that's regulated by the DEP, even if they're naturally occurring metals. But a petroleum release is a release, whereas in this situation, we have no release.
But you are changing the, the...
Mr. Glass...
...by, by mining it.
Mr. Glass...
Okay.
The applicant has the floor.
Will I have a chance to respond?
Mr. Glass, I don't want to have to mute you.
My question is, will I have a chance to respond?
I don't know yet. I'll let you know, thank you.
So I was done, so, Kevin?
Thank you, Derek. I guess, well, sure, I'll, I'll throw it to Mr. Glass to, well, if he gets his, whatever he, his question, he can get something to say.
Okay, Mr. Glass?
Thank you. Regarding Attorney Warren's comment on the Jepson letter, the Jepson letter explicitly does not speak to Kimball era fill. It says it in the letter. It only speaks to KARP era fill, and there's a lot of Kimball era fill there that has been, has been subject to less scrutiny than the KARP era fill, and that's of concern. Also, in the statement that, that says that they didn't see any solid waste there, well, of course they didn't, because it's all been covered over by soil, so to rely on that...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fisher...
Let him finish.
Let him finish. He can't be making wild accusations and assertions that aren't based on...
Just let him finish.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And, and regarding the leachability, the main concern about this, this large amount of, of, of mining tailings that has the potential to be much finer grain, one sample in all those 118,000 cubic yards isn't, isn't sufficient to, to draw a conclusion, but the main concern is leachability, and that's the only, and that's a test that you didn't run, it's a very inexpensive test, it is the, it is the standard test to run to find out about leachability, and you didn't run it, even in the one sample. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. The applicant?
Thank you. I think Attorney Finn wants to, about some brief comments?
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Are they done answering all my questions? Because they didn't, they didn't cut out...
The applicant has the floor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Steve Finn, I'm here representing the applicants, I am an attorney. I do want to address a couple of Mr. Glass's comments. You know, we, we took the position that you have every right to look at environmental issues, and in fact, many of our submissions to this commission have been composed of environmental testing, environmental results, environmental reports. So to claim that we don't think you have jurisdiction over environmental issues is not correct, in fact, our submission has indicated that you do. What I did say the last time is that with respect specifically to things that fall under the jurisdiction of DEP, that I didn't think it... that I didn't think it was smart or wise or efficient for this commission to try to do what DEP does. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. With regard to this, the comment that the Inland Wetlands Commission recognized, or at least the expert that they hired, recognized that this commission has jurisdiction over the type of fill that goes to this property. We're not disputing that. And in fact, we've taken care of that with our material acceptance procedure. Any new fill coming to this property has to meet the material acceptance procedure. And you all heard Mr. Glass say that the material acceptance procedure meets the requirements for having clean fill come to this property. So this idea that we're depriving you of the opportunity to vet the fill coming to this property is just wrong. And lastly, I do want to just reiterate something I said to you the last time, and that is the Inland Wetlands Commission, uh, two things. One, the Inland Wetlands Commission did listen to everything that Mr. Glass had to say before it and rejected it. That's why they approved our remediation plan. Now, maybe he has some new information. I can't really tell. But I can tell you that he submitted at length, spoke at a number of hearings, and in the end, the Inland Wetlands Commission rejected his claims and approved our application. I would, uh, last point, and that is, is that in the condition of, in the approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission that I handed out to you last time, there is a condition that requires the applicant, the owner of this property, to obtain all applicable state and local permits, including those required by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So to the extent that some kind of permit is required by DEP, that is a condition of approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission approval, and you certainly can make the same conditions part of your approval. That's all I have to say right now. I know Attorney Green's going to address you. It's certainly very possible I may have some responses to what he has to say. Thank you very much for your attention.
Mr. Soli? Have you finished answering the questions?
You know, I, I think we, in a roundabout way, we answered a number of his questions.
Evan didn't answer all the questions.
There's no requirement that they answer all the questions.
Okay.
Mr. Carp, I have a few things to add.
Yes, Mr. Karp. One of the things that was brought up was the Amazon site. The material before it left the site was tested. We then tested it only one time when it got to ours, because we had all the testing before it left. We had the time the trucks left that site to the time the trucks arrived at our site. We did visual inspections. So it's not like this stuff isn't being tested. It is being tested prior to leaving where it is. And it's interesting that a lot has been made of tonight of two manifests that were sent to DEP. One from a basinary supplier in Westport, and it had high readings of lead. It never came to our site. There's the email that said, we've reviewed it, we've spoken to our LEP. It doesn't meet our requirement. It cannot come. The other one was a site that Jay mentioned where they wanted to send us 300 trucks of material. One of them had a high degree of lead. We rejected, out of the 300 possible, we rejected before it even left their property. Everything but seven loads we tested before went, before it came to us. We tested it when it came to us, and that's why, so there was a pre-test that the DEP was concerned about. It came to our site after we tested it again. It came into all of the parameters that we're looking for, and only seven of the 300 were taken. So again, our procedures and our policies are working. And it's interesting that DEP happened to check on those areas. We sent them a letter. We sent them all of our backup, which we had. And, you know, so everything that we have said sort of from the beginning about that, you know, there was a comment of, something came from Wade's Garage. Wade's Garage was a site that was cleaned up, and all we took was the clean concrete. There was a lot of discussion about soils. We have taken very little soils. We've taken concrete, which is easy to certify, and very little soils. So, you know, we keep on going back to things. No time since my ownership and the testing that we've done have we found anything that has been a cause of concern. You know, we keep on hearing that the site is polluted to diminish the value of my site, but none of the LEP, none of the testing that we have done, anything has shown anything that raises our area of concern. At 5 o'clock, a very important letter came in, 40 pages from Mr. Glass, highlighting all sorts of things. So important, we've had it before 5 o'clock today. But it's very interesting on the things that he talks about, where there have been problems. And even in his own report, the places there have been problems in filling have been sites not usually owned by an individual or, in my case, an LLC. They have been municipal sites where nobody is providing the oversight. Okay, I can tell you what goes on at the site daily. I can tell you that, you know, it has largely been closed. You know, I have read that, you know, all the bad things that people are saying. None of our testing. We have done a rather extensive testing in spite of what we hear tonight. There hasn't been a test where any of my professionals have come and said, geez, Mr. Karp, we need to do more testing. Evan Glass brought up the point about you need to go deep down. We did test pourings, and we actually brought in an excavator, and we dug down into the piles to make sure that what was there, okay, that we own, wasn't an issue. So again, you know, very little in concrete findings, just lots of, it's a dirty site. It is not a dirty site. This site has been gone through time and time again. The reports indicate that there's nothing of concern. Our protocol has proven to us that it actually works. Because the two loads the DEP had any concerns of never showed up. Wasn't, they showed up when we sent them back. They never arrived on the site. That's part of the reason that we're here to ask for remediation at a fill permit. It will take time, and these are not my closing remarks, but we have been very careful to make sure that we have followed the letter of the law. And I really resent that, you know, you keep on hearing that the site somehow is impacted. It's not. We're trying to prove a negative, which is very hard for us to disprove, except we have the testing on our side.
And to that point too, Mr. Glass made a statement before that, while the letter from Jepson says there was no solid waste observed on the site, he said it was because it was all buried. In fact, the deep test holes that were conducted by WSP included in his testing, those pits were still open when Jepson came to the site and did his inspection with the representative. So the fact, you know, these, again, I just wanted to add that for the record, that there were two holes that were exposed as part of that when he was on site. I'll hand it back to Attorney Green.
Nope. I think I can really simplify a few things for the commission. First of all, and I, I'm struck by many of the comments by the applicant, and I listened very carefully. And even tonight, you know, the last 15 or 20 minutes of the last session of your public hearing were kind of interesting. And I heard about Mr. Karp and the many projects he's been involved with and, you know, his charitable activities and all kinds of other things. And I'm mostly just concerned with this site. I don't know what's going on in other sites, and I, I take him at his word on other sites. Who knows? But something he said, he said, we have carefully reviewed this site. And what struck me, he said, before I bought this site, I engaged in careful due diligence. And one of the great concerns that my client has is when Attorney Kimball's brother was operating the site, it was fill brought in. And we are concerned, and there's been nothing disclosed about that fill. Now, if Mr. Karp, who is an experienced developer of property, engaged in due diligence before he did the site, then certainly he had a Phase 1, a Phase 2, and probably a Phase 3 environmental study done on this site. So why wouldn't this commission, and why wouldn't Mr. Karp help this commission by bringing forward the environmental studies that he had conducted when he did his due diligence before he dove in on this site? Wouldn't that help this commission in understanding what the condition was before Mr. Karp on the site? So I pose that. We have a report this evening, and I've been listening carefully. Mr. Soli said, and, and we provided this to DEP. So as if this commission would take comfort knowing that this report may have been reviewed by DEP. But, and maybe he didn't even mean that, but so there's no confusion. As I understand it, I'm looking at a letter dated December 16. The sampling was done on the 10th of December. The, and Phoenix, who did the environmental analysis, it was collected on the 10th. It was received on the 13th, and the analysis was completed yesterday. And this letter was completed today. So I'm sure that Mr. Soli meant that they submitted it to DEP today. He didn't mean to suggest to this commission that you should take comfort in this report yet or that DEP, or that DEP has accepted this or approved this or endorsed it or taken any action on it. Am I correct on that?
Mr. Green, I'd like for you to finish.
Sure, I'll, I just want to correct, because he was mistaken. I think, I think he, I think he was mistaken because I did not speak to the report in your hand. I spoke to the comprehensive subsurface and stockpile investigation report that was prepared, very prepared by Derek Jones dated December 2020. This report, Mr. Green, is provided to DEP, okay?
Mr. Soli, please let Mr. Green finish.
Now, Mr. Glass asked how many samples were taken of the material. This is as to the stockpile materials on the site. How many samples were taken? How many cubic yards of materials on the site? What the sampling frequency was of the material? And what the standard for testing is in Connecticut? And what standard was used to test this material? He posed those four questions, and I didn't hear those questions get answered by the applicant. So that's out there.
Let me remind you that the questions are not required to be answered by the applicant. They are merely questions that are put to the applicant. If he desires to answer them, he can. If he doesn't, he doesn't need to. The commission will take that into consideration in all its deliberations.
However, I, and I respect the chair's ruling on that. However, we are an intervenor in this proceeding. And therefore, as I understand it, we do have the opportunity to question the consultants produced by the applicant.
Which is what you've been doing.
Which is what we've been doing, but I haven't heard answers to those questions. And I, and let me say this, I don't mean to, I, I don't mean to try your pitches. And I respect the work that you do, and I respect the effort that this commission is going to on this application. And I know you spent a lot of time on it, and we, we have. I'm just going to say, the town of Monroe's got a long way to go on this project. And there's a lot to think about with this project. And certainly, I'm, I'm going to formally ask for an opportunity to respond to this document. And I know Mr. Karp said that he got a 40-page document today, and I think that's fair comment. However, I got a 20-page document after I had submitted my document. So there's still, there's still a lot to, to look at in this case. And I understand that many of you want to read the materials that have been submitted to the commission. You may have questions. So I'm formally asking for an opportunity to respond to this and to provide it to Mr. Glass, to my client, so that we can analyze this. I haven't had the chance to read this. I'm not going to, look, there's a lot to this application. There's kind of, we questioned the quality of the testing, the quantity of the testing and the testing methodology that has gone on. It's Mr. Glass, Mr. Glass said, we feel that there are areas of filling, and we have submitted a photo into the record that shows the dramatic excavation on this site, areas that have been filled. And I think that if you compare the WSP, the volume of testing, the number of test holes and the number of test pits, and you compare them to the areas that are filled, is our opinion that there has not been adequate testing. We have urged this commission, and if you have questions on that, don't trust our consultant, as Mr. Glass said, and don't trust the applicant's consultant. You should have an independent consultant advising you as to whether the testing is sufficient or not. I don't know why this commission would take on the burden of assuming, of making a judgment on whether the testing is adequate based on the experts that have been provided in this case. And there's a lot of testimony either way. And you should take advantage of the opportunity to have an independent consultant look at this and advise you, at least on that point, as to whether the testing has been adequate so that this commission can be comfortable in allowing this site to be filled and potential impacts on the groundwater. It's reasonable. I know, and I'm going to say this, I know you're tired of this project. I know it's been a long slog. I know it's been before you many times over many years. But this is important. Another comment that I will make for you is sometimes we get so focused on certain issues that we lose sight of other issues that are important to the jurisdiction of this commission and the job that you do in assuring that projects such as these are done in a way that's just, fair, and reasonable and in accordance with your regulations and that protect the air, the water, the natural resources, and the residents of Monroe. I note that in your regulations, under requirements for approval in 6.4.8, and this is sensible. It says, "The commission, in considering and reviewing the application and in arriving at its decision, shall be guided by and taken into consideration the public health, safety, and general welfare and general effect of the same on the neighborhood, the duration of operations, future usefulness of the premises, the impact on vehicular traffic in the area, and such other factors as may bear upon the harmonious physical development of the town of Monroe." How many truckloads of material are we talking about over what period? How many truckloads of equipment coming and going from this property? We spend a lot of time talking about traffic, noise, impact, dust of that traffic off-site. And yet, as I sit here, I haven't heard a lot about that on this application. And maybe we got so focused on what's in the ground that we forgot what's on the street outside of this development. And that really hasn't been covered. And how many large applications do you get where there's not some robust traffic study that assures for you that people living in, in homes along the route to this project won't be impacted in some way? And that's something for you to consider. I'm just going to touch on some of the larger points. As Mr. Glass spoke to, once again, there was not much testing. There is, the applicant basically established this testing protocol, 1 to 250, and obviously, materials where this applicant was on the site was not subject to that scrutiny or perhaps any scrutiny. So that further goes to the testing issue. We do think, we do urge the commission to consider ordering that a pre-application meeting be had with DEP. Mr. Glass, when you read his report, and I understand that Attorney Warren disagrees with that, and I understand the applicant disagrees with that, but there is a lot of value to it. And you will see when you read Mr. Glass's report that it is a productive process and something that this commission should consider. process and something that this commission should consider. It's evident that there is demolition debris in the ground, and that's, you'll see in Mr. Glass's report, he touches on that, and that was from testing that was conducted by the applicant. So there is actually demolition debris that is buried on the site, and I urge you to read that portion of the property. There had been, look, I think that there are a lot of questions to be answered. I know that the commission will have questions after you read Mr. Glass's letter. We certainly want the opportunity to read this WSP report. And so for the moment, that's all I have to offer on this, I think. At the last meeting of the commission, I touched on some of the, sort of the nuts and bolts from your regulations. As far as I'm concerned, the commission can't waive your regulations as, as the applicant has requested. I think that there are other infirmities in the application that I touched on at the last meeting. I don't know if you have any questions for me or our consultants at this point. Once again, I greatly appreciate your generous patience. I recognize the context. I also sort of had to, have to mention that if there was sort of this, at Wetlands, this is a zoning matter, now there was some suggestion by the applicant that, you know, Wetlands has approved this, so you can sort of look past some of the environmental issues. I think the commission should be mindful of that, and every, and it did happen, but you can weigh that. And that's all I have. I don't know if you have questions for me at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Go to the commissioners at this point.
No questions.
You can ask anybody you'd like.
No, I don't have any question at this.
Dominic?
No, no question.
No questions.
Yeah, then Dominic.
No question.
Both Dominic said no.
They both still said no.
They moved on.
They're both still at no. Don't have any questions at this time.
Wow. I have a couple of questions.
I'm going to ask them later.
I have some questions. I guess, I guess I'll have to ask my questions to Attorney Warren. This letter from DEP was dated 12/15/2021. So I believe that was yesterday, right?
Right.
And so I guess their findings, from what I can read here, was what you gave them, right? You gave, you must have gave them material, right? And you must have gave them a packet of material from the, and now, all of a sudden, they come up with these two companies here that delivers soil to that site, and all of a sudden, now you said those were rejected.
Right.
And you did all that in one day? And DEP has that information from you in one day? Or they didn't get any of that information yet?
I'm, I think I'm confused by your question.
Well, you said to me, all these, these were rejected, right?
Yep.
So how would you have paperwork on them if they were rejected?
We have paperwork on all of the materials that have been tested.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking you.
Okay.
Was this stuff brought to this site?
No.
Then how did you give them paperwork to say that it was there?
Because we had analytical results that they provided to us, that they had taken samples at their own properties. And so they provided, they were in our possession, that, so we turned over everything in our possession, every trip ticket, every, every piece of analytical information we had. We said, here, it'll, here's, here's everything. What DEP didn't understand is that, that those tests were from, taken from the prop, from the soil when it was at the Galt site and at the Grid site.
Well, I believe you said you rejected.
Yes.
All these trucks.
Correct.
How did you test for lead if you rejected them?
Okay.
How do you do that?
No, so they were tested by Grid and by Galt. We were provided with the sample results. They didn't meet standards, so we said, we're not taking the soil. It didn't come to the site.
No, you said you rejected.
No, so.
Trucks. No, 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 that's not what she said. She just stated that she rejected the trucks. And so that means they came to the site.
No, we rejected the soil. We didn't reject.
Right, so then how'd you reject the soil?
We said you weren't.
No, you said so many truckloads you rejected.
Okay.
I believe that's what you told me.
There were, there were about 300 loads from the Grid. All of the Galt material was rejected, but just based on the soil results. The Grid results were provided to us. There were about 300 loads that ultimately we were sent elsewhere. We only took seven loads in. The seven loads that we took in that had tested clean were tested again once they got to the property to confirm.
And how was that tested?
How was that tested? Derek, do you want to answer that? Derek?
Uh, yeah. So we, we collect, well, samples are collected of the material and composite it, where there are also discreet samples taken and submitted in laboratory jars to Phoenix Soils for analysis. Phoenix Labs.
Okay, Derek, I got a question for you. How long does it take for testing? You have to take a sample, the material has to be on the property before you take a sample, and you do the testing on it, then the material's rejected. Is that the way it's done?
No, it's tested.
No.
So how does it test it? If it, if they had all these truckloads that they refused, so how was that soil tested that came to that site?
They, they submitted an application to bring soil to, to the site, and it was rejected based on their analytical package application. There, there were some materials, as part of the acceptance protocol, there's additional testing to confirm the applicant's testing once it arrives to the site. To my knowledge, nothing, sorry?
Well, no, 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 but what I'm going by is what was said to me in this commission, that they rejected these truckloads when they came.
We didn't reject the soil. We didn't reject the truckload.
You said so many truckloads. I, I, no, no, no.
They never left.
Leon, I think what happened, she said, she said that they took six of them in, but they rejected the rest. That's what I heard when I was here.
Leon, maybe I can clarify this and let me know if I'm wrong.
Okay, thank you.
I think what happened was they, this site, this grid logistic, this grid logistics site, I'm assuming the soil was collected there and put on, put in piles?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Then it was tested?
Yes.
Correct.
So material was taken out of the pile?
They gave.
Tested.
They gave the results to us.
They send, they send, they give.
Right, so I think, I think they went off of.
That's what was provided to DEP.
That's how I under, that's how I understand what their.
They never made it to the site. It was tested and that's what we wanted.
Well, that's what, that's what's said here. It said it was, well, it said, all, all the bulk loads identified as mixed load, asphalt, CO, whatever it is. It said all those bulk loads were identified as a certain criteria to DEP. And I'm saying, did you give this material to DEP so they can give us a report on us?
So, so we gave DEP all of the analytical information in our files, okay? Some of that analytical information came from the source sites, if you will, okay? They tested it, we rejected it. We did not take that soil. We didn't.
So how does DEP know that you rejected it? You gave them information on it?
So I got this email from Mark Jepson yesterday. Okay. We will be following up and providing this information to him. We got this yesterday. So Will, you're hearing it, you know.
No, I got that, and I was wondering how that you can get up all this information and give it to the state within one day? I just didn't understand how that happened.
No, no, I didn't get that to the state today. That, that was given to the state, I think, in, no, 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 in November. They had all of the.
No, no, I'm talking about what their findings was, that you said that you rejected that stuff.
Yep.
You didn't give that to the state.
That hasn't been given to the state.
Okay, so the state, so the state is still investigating that?
Right, well, we have.
I'm just saying, is that true or not? That's true.
So this, so that this email from Mark Jepson that we got yesterday says, we have two questions. We have answers to those questions. We're providing that to you tonight. We're going to work with DEP, resolve whatever this question or any other questions that they have. They are on top of this site. They are all over this and where.
All right, so the last time you told me that, in this meeting here, you explained to me that DEP doesn't close an investigation.
Right.
They never do.
Right.
It's open. That's not true. That I know for a fact is not true, because I reached out to people in the commission in DEP. And what happens with that is that there's an investigation done. Then after that, it goes to the enforcement department. Then after that, there's a report written, and then it's filed. If the enforcement department doesn't decide to do anything, or whatever it is, whatever the finding is, then they either enforce or they don't enforce.
Exactly what I said. They either.
No, 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 you told me that they didn't close the file. That's basically what you stated to me in a public meeting, that they didn't close the file. They do close the file, and they do report. So basically, as you being an environmental attorney, I have really, by you stating that to me, I really have concerns about the information that you're giving me. Because you stated to me that you've been working with, with Eisner.
Yep.
And all this other stuff, have working relationship, and they never close, never close, and never make a report. I found that.
Report, do you have anything in writing? In writing right here, so I agree with Leon.
I asked them to give us a report.
I'm just saying that you mis, you misquoted me.
Wanted to see something in writing. They rarely close complaints. They rarely close complaints. I don't think I said never. I think I said rarely. I know they're on this staff.
I understanding from the information I got is that there, this is the way the process goes. They do an investigation, okay? It's sent to the enforcement department. They look at all the investigation, all the material and everything like that. And then the enforcement department, it's, it's not even at the enforcement department. I would imagine that is.
Robert Eisner is the director.
I got, listen, listen, I'm just stating what you said to me at the last meeting, and I have, and I really have a problem with, when I asked you that question. And then I had your other attorney, Finn, jump up here and start jumping on me about what I can do as being a commissioner, as far as I, if there's an investigation going on with DEP, okay? And I, I needed to get the material or the information that I need to know that it, how this process goes, because basically, I don't know. I'm not an LP. I'm not a licensed professional. You have your own licensed professional. He has his own licensed professional. This commission should have our own licensed professional to look at this material.
You've got DEP looking at this.
I understand that, but we don't have anybody here to advise us.
You just got a letter from DEP.
We don't, I don't want to get in an argument with you about it, but I'm just saying to you, is you misquoted me last time, and I, and I really have concerns about that, because this is a big deal that we have to deal with, for one, okay?
I misspoke you.
You quoted me, you told me that they never close an investigation, they never reported, write a report. You stated to that, to me in a public meeting. I found out they do close it.
I didn't misspoke you.
Yes, you did, because I asked you that question. I, I don't know if these other commissioners heard, and I'm sure they did, because she just agreed.
She's using the term misspoke. I think you, he's saying you lied to him.
Right, you told me they didn't close.
That's what he said.
You told me that.
He's using the term misspoke, but he means you lied.
But saying, you told me that.
I suppose I've been called worse, but I've never been called a liar.
Well, I'm saying, basically, I don't know about what it is, but basically, I wanted to get to the question that, how the process worked. And I asked you specifically that question at the last meeting.
But I have told.
I just stated to you that, that's why.
Director of enforcement, he has not.
Yes.
The department has not.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's going a little bit in the wrong direction. I just have one question. Is your intent to remedy the situation on this site?
Yes.
Are you going to meet every single item that we require, that Inland Land requires?
Yes.
And DEP requires?
Yes.
Okay. So it's to work to the benefit of the town to have this remedied. If they follow all the regulations, and they meet our criteria, I don't see why we can't go forward.
But what is our criteria? I have other questions. No, I still have other questions. No, I don't want to.
Let's move on.
We are going to move on.
Okay, so let's move on now.
All right, so the other question I have to ask you is that, well, I could ask this to Kevin. Fine, but I guess DEP asked you for all the material pertaining to 64 Cambridge. Oh, my God. And I guess you only gave the material that concerned to Rockhead LLC, and you didn't provide anything for New England material.
We don't have New England material. We don't.
Well.
Arnold Karp is not New England Materials.
I understand that.
As a prior owner.
So there's no documentation on anything that went in that site?
We have requested of New England Materials documentation from their ownership, and we're working on providing that to DEP as well.
So that's, so that's another part of the investigation that's open.
DEP is, is investigating.
So then this, so this investigation is going ongoing.
I never said it wasn't, I never said it was closed, did I?
Okay, that's not the argument.
No, that's what I'm saying. So you, you, you plan on giving this information from New England Material to DEP?
What, we're working on it. I don't.
Working on it? Okay.
Five, it's not.
No, I just wanted to know, I guess they asked you for it, and I guess you never gave it to them, and.
The, the, the big overarching thing here is though, there is an applicant, there is a property owner.
I have that.
Who is cooperating with the DEP, who is responding to a complaint. They are actively engaged, so much so where they.
No, and.
Out of characteristics for them, provided a letter in writing that we could provide to this commission to show that they are engaged.
Well.
They went through thousands of pages of analytical data that was submitted. They flagged two items. They said, we want more information on this. We have been able to go through the records, find documentation regarding those two things, and we have a 30-page packet here that will be submitted to the DEP, the last page of which is an email from Rockhead to Galt saying, after review of the documentation, the results do not meet our criteria, therefore, we not, we cannot take in this material. Unfortunately, you'll need to find an alternate location for disposal.
Right, no, I have, no, 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 I'm good with that.
But DEP, right? They're here.
No, 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 and, and, no, 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 no. And I'm saying to you is that, what I'm saying to you is in DEP's letter, they asked, first to, specifically, they asked you for everything, and you only handed just to Rockhead LLC, and nothing from New England Materials. Now, I'm just, I'm just stating that. I understand that. I'm just stating that. I just want to state that for the record. Now, the other question I have to ask you is, you said to me, or you said to the commission that there's no demolition debris on that property. Is that what you're stating?
There is a difference between demolition, debris, and clean fill.
I have that, but I'm saying.
Demolition debris.
Yep.
It meets that definition. C and D waste was not imported to this property.
So.
Not before my ownership. Not before my ownership.
Right, but we have, we have pictures of rebar. We have pictures of brick and painted brick that we have in, that we have. We have those in, and I think, because I, I've seen them. And you're telling me that that stuff's not on that site?
I'm not saying that it's not on that site. I'm saying that is not C and D waste.
It's not?
No, it is not.
So when you have rebar mixed with, when you have, when you have, from what I understand, is, quote me if I'm wrong, you have rebar, you can't bury that in, in the ground.
Nor, nor, that is correct. Nor saying we wouldn't intend to bury that.
So that is there. So that's basically meets the criteria of demolition. I, I agree with that.
That's why within concrete does not.
Oh, you didn't process it yet, so you're going to have to process it and remove it.
We have to handle it, okay? But as we've stated before in front of this commission, no concrete that has rebar. That's why it has to be handled before it can be put in. The same thing that we said, we will handle and go through what came from Stratford High School. Now, Attorney Green asked me why I didn't do a Phase One or Two. Very knowledgeable attorney. Quite honestly, usually you do a Phase One or Two, and you get a very thick document. They charge you thousands of dollars. 50, 100, 250. Because I bought the property in cash after doing my own due diligence, so there are no reports, Attorney Green.
Over here, over here.[1786.51]
To be handed, to be handed into anybody. We did it. We knew what we were buying, okay? Through all of this conversation, the one thing that we haven't seen is a report that says, here's all this dirty dirt or construction debris, here's this insulation, this wood, roofing materials. There is, okay, asphalt on site. We've shown that, it's in all of our things, that's gonna go under our parking lots. We have agreed not to take anything but clean native fill and stone dust and fill above the waterline. But through all, sorry, below the waterline, there has been no report that anybody has been able to give me or show me that says there's an environmental issue. This is a red herring that I've chased after now for going on three years, okay? So we keep on hearing that there's a problem. We can find no problem. Everybody says, we'll do more testing. I could test here till the cows come home. If we find something while we're doing the work, and I have $5 million invested in this project, do you think I'm gonna bury it or do you think I'll dispose of it properly? Okay? I am pretty sure that, I will attest to this commission, that we've lived by the letter of the law, we have followed it. It's funny, the DEEP picked up on two things that we never took, which never came to the site. Well, if we didn't care, we wouldn't have the paperwork that says, oh, here it is, here's what happened, here's the way it worked. And Leon, you asked the question about, well, who spent all day yesterday going through the files? Regrettably, that was me, okay? The letter came in at about 10:00, I think we found it by 2:00 or 2:30. So, you know, we're doing everything that we can, but the bottom line here is, we are trying to remediate an environmental issue, which requires filling in this hole, getting the, rehydrating the wetlands, okay? And making sure what gets brought on the property is perfectly clean. And it is funny that the one thing that we can attest to is, jeez, the two reports that we got were back, none of that material came on site. It never left the site it was on. So I think we've shown that we're pretty good stewards of the property.
I've got one question to ask them, that's all. All right, Mr. Carp, I just got a question to ask you. So then you wouldn't, so then, since you're so on to making sure that this site is clean, then you wouldn't have a problem for us waiting for the report from DEEP to be on with their investigation, I would imagine?
From what I have heard from my attorney.
Yep.
Attorney Warren, DEEP is never going to issue a all-clean on the site. I am not an environmental attorney, but I have spoken, they will monitor this site, they continue to get called, that they come out to the site, they continue to look at our paperwork, but they are not in, from what I have heard, okay? And I'm not gonna talk about, they will not issue you or anybody an all-clean piece of paper because if there's ever an issue, we are responsible for it, okay? So the last time that Mr. Jepson was there, okay, he walked through the site, he says there's nothing that we can save, we continue to get all sorts of complaints. It's not like they're not aware of this, but from what I've heard from Jane and others, nobody is going to issue me a all-clean, everything is fine, letter, okay? They just don't do that.
But to elaborate on that a little bit, DEEP is investigating the site and the materials that are there. The application before this commission is to perform a filling activity. That filling activity has been designed in strict accordance with all of the applicable zoning requirements, that it's gone through the inland wetlands commission and has been approved by the inland wetlands commission. And the information before this commission as part of that fill permit is far more exhaustive than any other application that this commission has ever received or processed or approved for a fill permit application. Included in that material is a fill intake protocol, which far goes above and beyond anything that has ever been contemplated or managed or implemented on any site, I'm gonna guess in the entire state of Connecticut. We've established testing criteria. We've established a process on how material comes in, how it gets segregated, what the QA QC requirements are, what the testing requirement is before it comes on site, what has to be submitted before it can be accepted on the property. We've provided all of that documentation. That is what this commission is considering. This commission is considering.
And you're right, that's what we're considering right now. I have concerns what's been in the site that may contaminate the rest of the site.
And that's, and that is, as a resident of the town of Monroe, you can be concerned with that, but that is not pertinent to the fill permit application before this commission. And just like every other site in the town of Monroe that has or has been contaminated, DEEP is the person who's responsible to look into and require remediation.
And I understand that. What I'm saying to you is that your criteria, like I tried to tell people here on the commission that we need our own licensed professional because your protocol of what you want to put in there and what we need is a totally different thing because I think that we need to make sure that we have all the wells we need, we have all this we need, and that is not something that, I'm a professional at, and like, I guess Attorney Green says, don't take their word, don't take your guy's word, you should have your own so that we can at least know that we are protected moving forward. That's my concern.
So the protection is in the protocol.
That's your protocol, I got that.
If there's.
No, and I have that, and I understand that. I'm saying to you is, you keep on saying that we don't need one or that you have your own protocol, but I'm saying to you is that basically, this is a big undertaking for this commission. It's a huge undertaking for this commission. You're gonna bring in material, you're gonna have to have all these reports, you're gonna have to have all this stuff, somebody has to review all these reports. Our staff can't handle that. There's no way that they can ever handle that. And so I, I'm very concerned about, you know, your clean fill aspect and what you bring in and then like, you know, saying that there was no, you say it's not demo debris, but if you really look at it, if it has, if it has rebar in it, it has this in it and it has that, it is considered demo. But I'm just saying, and it's all different things about it. So right now I have no questions and I would like to read this report and I'd like to read your report and this report, and then I want to leave this meeting open so I can have my own questions on the last time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carp, I just have a couple of brief comments just to.
Well, let's go to.
Yeah.
Others, or more now.
Yeah.
Um, let's start with Mr. Carp.
My backup.
Your backup. You said in front of this commission that you brought Attorney Warren on after you purchased the property because she knows the property in and out better than anybody else, correct?
Correct.
From a legal, environmental attorney standpoint?
For two reasons. She knew the property. She's one of the foremost attorneys on environmental law.
I don't doubt that.
So that.
I just asked, that's what you said?
Yes.
I don't doubt that she's very good. Never came across my mind. So, thank you. Ms. Warren, can I ask you a question? Were you the attorney under the previous regime?
I don't know if I, I might have done some work for New England Materials.
Okay. I understand, Mr. Carp, everything he's turned into to DEEP is good, right? I get that. I, I don't think, I don't think we have to go crazy with, with more testing with his stuff because I think his stuff, according to the letter, is good to go. And I'm assuming that you're gonna take care of what DEEP wants to know about the two issues that are here. And you'll submit what needs to be submitted and as of right now, I think you're gonna take care of that. My thing is with New England Materials, that was supposed to be done to a certain depth during the excavation. Actually, Kev, come on, you're up too. We'll make this a team effort. Were you the engineer for New England Materials the first go around?
Yes.
And that was supposed to be dug to a certain level, correct? And it went way past that level, correct?
We identified, we identified that in our quarterly reports.
Sure. Still went way past the levels it needed to.
Yes.
Good.
So we were on that site until maybe?
So I have in front of me today, I have the engineer that was working on that project, I have the attorney that possibly assisted a family member in that, but yet we don't have what was put in, what was, what was dropped there during that time. Do you understand where I'm coming from? I, I want to know what New England Materials put in that ground. I have their engineer here and their attorney here who knows that property better than us, better than most.
So we were.
And I still have no idea what they put in the ground.
We were, we were the engineer on that site during the quarry operation until, I think, September of 2018. At that time, our services were no longer wanted by the owner.
Okay.
Okay? Up until that point, it was an export site.
Nothing ever came in?
No, not to my, it was a quarry operation. It was, they blasted rock, they crushed it, processed it, sold it off. It's in thousands and thousands of buildings and roads and everywhere else throughout the entire state of Connecticut and beyond. So once we were no longer active, that's when the hole got deeper and material started to get on site. And that happened in a period between my involvement and Mr. Carp's acquisition of the property.
Okay.
But I can answer that question. The testing that we.
You can answer the question why I don't have New England Materials, what was dropped there?
I can actually answer two of your questions, okay? One that you.
Fire away.
Okay. So we've done all of the testing on site, okay? We've gone through the kimball piles, we've gone through anything that was not native prior to our ownership.
Okay, so if you've gone through that pile, why is DEEP asking for, asking for stuff from New England Materials?
As they should. New England Materials was the prior owner. I have requested of New England Materials, any and all materials that they have regarding the site.
Okay.
But through all that request, we have not found anything that is alarming, okay? That is a problem. Okay, so I, when you ask.
So when they dug and they did their holes, they went all the way down to whatever New England Materials had dropped on that site?
Yes. They did borings to bedrock. They did borings till they hit the ledge, that's where they stopped digging. They did borings in deep test pits. WSP, on behalf of Mr. Carp, did that analysis and did all that testing. That was this report that I was waving around before, that was submitted to DEEP, that includes a comprehensive analysis of all the material that's on the site that was imported prior to his ownership.
So Ms. Warren, you can't get this stuff from, from the previous regime?
Requested, we requested the materials. When DEEP asked us for the materials, this all came in connection with the complaints that were filed, and so we thought that the information request related to the applicant. That's the application on file, so that's what we responded to. And now that they've said that.
Does the previous owner have that stuff that we can send to DEEP?
I believe they're pulling together records, yes. And DEEP has requested it, so they're going to have to respond to DEEP. DEEP has requested it through Rockhead and so Rockhead has made the request of New England Materials.
And let's not, he, let's not, you know, we've submitted, as part of the past application, which I believe is part of the record for this application, we submitted some of the materials that New England Materials had. We submitted all the analytical testing that was done on Stratford High School prior to any of that clean fill from that high school being brought to this property. So there's some material that exists that, that is in our possession. We will provide that to Rockhead and we're requesting, we're requesting more from, from New England Materials.
And I have agreed to provide anything that I get, okay? To give to DEEP. There's no hidden agenda here.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No, no, I'm not.
I'm not suggesting there's a hidden agenda at all.
No, no.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, you have their engineer and you have their attorney and we, and, and, and nothing has been brought up until, are you raising your hand?
I am, I am, because I think I can shortcut this really quickly.
Shortcut it for me then.
So I'm hoping you're gonna remember at the very first hearing on this application before this commission, there was an issue brought up about having your own independent expert sort of review things. And what, what was mentioned and apparently has gotten lost is that the inland wetlands commission hired their own independent expert that Mr. Carp had to pay for, but they selected that expert. His name is Russ Diarenzo. He's from Arcais. I'm not an environmental attorney, but I understand that Arcais is a very well-known environmental firm. And Mr. Diarenzo is the one who said that with regard to that, making sure the fill was okay to be put in this hole, that was within your jurisdiction. And that was quoted by Mr. Glass. But what was left out in Mr. Glass's presentation is that report, it's a written report, said that the testing that was done by WSP was more than adequate to make sure that this property was environmentally fine. And I have the report in front of me and I can't guarantee it, I'm not sure that that's what that report says, that the testing by Russ Diarenzo, an independent expert hired by this town through the inland wetlands commission, that this property, the testing was adequate and there was nothing found of concern. So my tone is too aggressive, Mr. Green.
No, you're not, you're not aggressive at all. I just, my only concern is, and I'm not concerned about Rocketts, right? I'm not. What I am concerned is about New England Materials. And, and if we can somehow drum that up and get it over to.
But New England Materials actions, right? So I was involved while it was an export site. Once I wasn't involved anymore, I wasn't there, I didn't.
I hear you.
I wasn't a part of it, right? But whatever they did, Arnold now owns. So if there's something there, he's gotta take care of it.
Correct.
And DEEP is so deep into this investigation that if they find anything, he's gonna be on the hook for it. And he's going to do what he needs to do to address it.
But the point is, we would have found it by now.
Right.
Okay? With, again, they can't bury it any deeper than our drilling rigs went, okay? They can't hide it under trees and forest, okay?
Well, there aren't no more there.
But that's exactly my point, which is, I think we have done a very good job of looking what's, of what's under the hood.
So what you're telling me is whatever material was brought in through New England Materials, you guys dug to the end of the earth until you couldn't dig anymore and it was tested and it was clean?
Yes, yes. Yes, that's correct. And actually, Rick, if you could, let me share the screen real quick. So this is the, this is the figure from the WSP report that shows all the investigations that were completed, the borings and the test pits. You can see right through here, all those black dots are borings. It went all the way down to bedrock. Within the limits of this pile, we've acknowledged, right here, this is where the clean fill from the demolition of Stratford High School was placed. We've testified.
I just got one. Before we go any further. I just got a question. Oh, okay, go ahead. I just had a question about that.
Right, we'll get back to you. We've testified on the record, we've testified on the record that that pile, while we've done countless test pits and borings and tested all of that material, and it has not come back as a contaminated material that needs that showing any kind.
Those borings, you went, you couldn't dig any deeper on those borings?
Correct, we went through bedrock.
You went to.
How deep did you go? How, how far down did they?
I'm gonna pull the boring lines.
And then we also hired, we brought an excavator to go through the piles, okay?
So five feet, 20 feet, 20 feet, five feet, again, because it's to refusal, 25 feet, 25 feet, 25 feet, excuse me, 27 and a half feet. And it's, and it's to refusal. 25 feet.
Refusal means that the drill can't go in.
Can't go any deeper.
You were hitting the rock that was.
Excuse me, 43 feet.
And five feet, it was already in a hole that was.
Yes, we hit refusal.
Make it very clear, yeah.
Exactly, so.
It sounds like it's, you know, you're already very deep.
Of those borings, excuse me, so 33 feet, 43 feet, it went all the way down until they hit refusal and they couldn't go anymore because they were at bedrock.
All those red dots that you have there is where you did the borings?
The red dots are the test pits, the black dots are the borings.
I can't really see the black dots.
The question I just have to ask...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It's...
And then I'll ask my question. We'll go again. Okay. I'm still up.
Commissioner Maini.
Yes.
Still going. Great.
We totally derailed your line of questioning. I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I want to say thank you for that. That's good stuff, and I'm sure they have more questions.
All right, so the prior ownership, New England Materials. Ultimately, if you guys are unable to answer for the materials that are brought into the site, that were brought into the site, and I understand that Inland Wetlands, you know, had hired their own LEP, done all the due diligence requested by them. But if we were to request that very thing with our own LEP, is that something you guys are interested in complying with?
We'd already provided what we had, but again, whatever it was, it's been tested.
No, I know. Our own LEP, that is objective and non-biased, that we feel comfortable with. Is that something that you'd be interested in doing? Because I know that would make the commissioners feel better.
Do you have the Arcais report?
I believe it's in the record because it was submitted as part of the...
That was a report done by the Arcais report, a engineer hired by the town.
Yeah, but, okay.
And they reviewed the WSP...
Well, that they've agreed to.
No, that has to... Mr. Carp, for say, let's say down the road, this, we give you a fill permit. You've agreed to have a licensed professional monitor, that's correct?
Yes.
And the last...
As we have been doing, again, since we bought it, Kevin's been testing the water. WSP has been out to do all of our other testing.
Mr. Carp, yes, we'll work.
Yes.
No, I'm all set. I mean, if this report is enough, we can discuss that amongst the commission and look into the findings and go on from there. I'm all set.
Rick, have you made the Arcais report available to all the commissioners?
I sent it out a long time ago.
You did get that a while ago. All right. We might need another copy. Maybe I threw it out. Okay.
It might not have been here.
Oh, that's true. I know you do.
All right. Most of my questions, but I want to thank both sides for all the...
Don't forget we have public...
Hours you've put in. I know how stressful it's been and time-consuming, and I get it, so thank you. I just wanted to confirm a few dates. So, under Rocketts, Kevin, you stopped in 2018, right? Pretty much. Under New England, sorry. Not enough coffee. After that date, when's the first date that you, Mr. Carp, submitted any samples to DEP that they requested?
I don't think they requested anything till the complaints went in, till there was a dialogue with DEP.
And when was that?
I mean, we... You know, they started to come out, and they started to do things, do inspections. I mean, I think we even have in the presentation their report. Let's see, we can find out. So, this is their inspection report, which was from...
19.
December 2019.
It's 19, okay.
Two years ago. Two years ago.
So, in 2020, though, they kept asking for more information. So, was that given to them as soon as they requested it? Or was there a time lapse between when they requested it and...
I don't have all the dates in front of me. I apologize. I think there were time lapses. I think it took a while to gather materials, and we provided what we thought was responsive, and they wrote back and said this didn't answer all of our questions. Now, can you provide additional things? So, we would provide those additional things.
There was also some confusion, I think.
Yeah.
Ms. Jane was coordinating with higher-ups and sending stuff to them, but they were the bosses of the guys that other commissioners were calling and asking questions about. So, there was, you know, the right hand wasn't always talking to the left hand.
That goes. Okay. So, then, I know that you've invested a lot in this property, and if we, you know, down the road, like Bruna said, we do invest in this or approve this. You know, I feel like there's been a push now to get everything to DEP, and there's kind of like this push for us to get this through. And does that have anything to do with the property being for sale?
I think from... Let me get this, because I've been working about this for a while. In June of 2019, when Mr. Carp bought the property, he knew it was a big hole in the ground that needed to get filled. The first thing he did was call up land use staff and come in and have a meeting. From day one, we've been trying to get this property to be marketable so it could be developed.
Right.
And the development could be through a lease, through a sale, somehow to get it to a place where it could be developed so it can be a productive property. We went through this process for a year with Wetlands and planning and zoning. We're not successful. We went back to the drawing board. We met with Wetlands in formal. We said, "How do we satisfy your concerns?" We worked with them. We made a new application. We filed that application. We went through that approval process, and we got approved. That's the first step. Without that approval, we can't market it. We can't put it up for sale or say that this is a future industrial site because he's handcuffed. Because for two and a half years, he's been battling like this because people are raising all kinds of stuff that we don't believe are founded. So, it couldn't be put up to sale without the Wetlands approval and without frankly being at a point where we're optimistic that this commission will approve this fill permit application because that's what needs to happen. We need to do the work. We need to de-water. We need to place the fill. We need to get it up to be level. We need to restore the watershed, to rehydrate the easterly wetland system. We're, you know, we're on the five-yard line. We got Wetlands approval.
But I can also... We can't, until the property is cleaned up and the cloud that has been put on this over the last two and a half years, again, none of my testing, nothing I have done onsite, checking the old piles, checking anything new that has come up, has caused me any concern. But if you Google this piece of property, it comes up as a very dirty site. Nobody is going to walk on and say, "Jeez, I want to put my industrial building or rent space in the condition it's in." So, yes, we have put it out there for feelers. It is a great time if you had a clean 70-acre industrial site. There are lots of users.
Right.
I am years away from being able to do that. Now, if I was to get a tenant, okay, who said, "Jeez, we want to build," remember, I'm going to be back in front of this board and Wetlands probably at least once or twice a year for the next five or seven years. So, this isn't like...
Thanks for the...
I'm showing up and disappearing. Regrettably, I'm going to be back for everything that we need to do. This is just to remediate the Wetlands, okay? And start to fill in the gigantic hole, okay?
I just want to make sure it's done right, because as we've noted, when it turns over to the next owner, we seem to have problems getting information from the previous owner. And at the last meeting, you said, "Oh, that's the one in Monroe and being here for 10 years." And two weeks later, it's for sale, so...
But the long-term goal here, okay, is to develop it, sell off a piece, turn it into rental, whatever I can get. Again, this isn't to spend the next 20 years as a remediation project. It's to get it back onto the tax basis, which again, I've asked for five years, okay? Because I think it's going to take that long to source the fill, okay? We, you know, at 10:36, where I'm also doing a fill operation, I didn't go through any of this. The biggest concern I have at this site is the discussions that have been had at this board and at Inland Wetlands makes it seem that this is a dirty site. We have found, you know, zero issues that give us concern. On the other hand, it is nicely darkened property, okay? If there was something that was mysterious or we had found something, you'd have all the data.
And I want nothing more than to fill this and move on, believe me.
Correct.
Nothing more. I mean, for the town of Monroe, for the safety of our residents and ourselves and future residents, I want it to be done correctly, and I'm in agreement. You know, originally, it was DEP's not involved, DEP's not involved. Well, now they're really involved, and now they're requesting more information. And now that... So, until DEP has finished their review, and whether they provide a final report or not, I'll leave to those that deal with that. But until they're done with their review, I'm not comfortable closing this hearing. I don't have any other questions.
But that's... But those are independent... I just ask the commission to go back to what you're elected to do, what the role of this commission is. The role of this commission is to administer planning and zoning regulations. We have an application filed before this commission. We do a fill permit on a piece of property. We've designed that in accordance with the regulations. We've done everything we can to exceed those requirements. A deep investigation to a property is independent from an application before this commission. Commissioner Lupo, you may or may not be aware, there are countless sites in this town...
Yes, I know.
That are environmentally impacted, that are under investigations with DEP, that are under orders for remediation with DEP. This commission has received and approved multiple applications for properties that had environmental issues that were never part of the discussion. So, I only caution that I think it's very troubling to try to connect those two things when they... I don't believe they're connected.
It also may result in an essential denial because I know that my credibility has been questioned, but I've worked on sites for over a decade where there have been hundreds of complaints filed, and they're never closed out. Now, they will close out a consent order. They will close out, you know, enforcements. But there are... People have the right to complain every day to DEP if they want to, and they don't take the time to respond or close out all of their complaints. I would say most of their complaints. If I said all of their complaints, I misspoke, and I apologize for that. I'm sure they have closed some complaints, but most of the complaints I work on just go in a circular file. They investigate them, and they move on when they don't find an issue. So, if this commission said, "We're going to wait until DEP finishes investigation," they may never... They just may never finish.
I didn't say finish. I just said give more information, that's all.
But their request for information is never-ending. Because if somebody calls them tomorrow, they will open a new investigation. So, I'll agree to that if every piece of property in the town of Monroe has the same import and fill requirements that I have offered to the town. If they want to make that a universal thing, including the town itself, you will find that nothing will get done in the town. At a certain point, you have to take the applicant, and I'm going to say that is myself and my LLC, at our word that we will do what the right thing is. And look, the bond that has been required by Scott and by... Wetlands Commission. Several millions of dollars.
No, $740,000.
$740,000 for P and Z?
No.
It's only $740,000. Sorry.
I'm changed.
It seemed... Yes, it's $740,000 of bond, plus attorney's fees. I rounded it to $100,000. So, my point is, and I understand the commission's concern and the town's concerns, but we've been here for two and a half years, okay? It is time to move this forward and say, okay, you've got to have some faith in the group who is here. And again, you know, I think you asked if you could go see the property. We're not here to hide anything. We are here to approve this property and make it saleable or rentable, okay? Where it is wise today, it is neither, okay?
And I think...
My tour.
And I think that, you know, DEP's involved. DEP has some calls and complaints, that they're not going to let something happen here. They're going to hold the applicant responsible for all of them. We're dealing with a piece of property in the center of the industrial park in the town of Monroe that should have a big warehouse on it. We've missed opportunities. Still, the chainsaw that built the development in Oxford, they had looked at this at one point. We missed that opportunity. There are... We're right now in a period of time where industrial development is off the charts. There's an opportunity. There's a real opportunity.
Okay, I would love to have that property developed. I don't think any one of us doesn't want to develop.
Right, but... Part of that market is timing, and it's going to take a long time to fill this site. If we continue to delay the processing of these land use applications to allow DEP to take whatever time they're going to have, it's going to be decades.
Your proposed fill right now, Kevin, remind me, five years?
We...
Where are we looking at right now?
We believe this will take five years to fill this site.
Okay.
We've acknowledged and said on the record, this commission, through your regulations, has the ability to grant a two-year fill permit, and then you can grant extensions.
Okay.
Which means by granting this permit, we're going to be able to fill for two years. But we're going to have to come back before it. We, as part of our application materials, we've agreed and provide, and we were trying... We want to provide monthly reports to the land use staff. We've offered, if the commission is concerned with staff's ability to review, we've offered to have yours truly provide presentations to the commission on the status at whatever frequency you like. We don't have to make it that frequent for Mr. Carp's benefit, but we are, from the beginning, from June of 2019 when Mr. Carp bought this property, all his goals have been is to develop this, and I think he's tried really hard to do that.
And I have a question, not just pertaining to this property, but just a general question for staffer. So, if we issue a two-year permit, and then the sale of the property goes through, and there's a new owner after two years, how does that affect... Do they have to do a whole new comeback in front of us? Does it go with the property?
Permits are transferable.
Okay.
Transferable.
So, it's transferable? Okay. That's all I have.
But you're also... That would be a consideration if things are not going well and it's sold.
Right, right.
Then you can say, "Our..."
Okay.
In any future use of this property beyond just the filling that's proposed, has to come back before you.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
So, I'll be a frequent flyer. Again, no one is buying it in the condition it's in. People inquire, and they've said, "Take care of it." You know, we've heard this before. Again, we have not found a single in all of our investigation, anything that concerns us. You know, I'll say DEP because, you know, they've gone through all of our paperwork. I had a conversation with Mr. Kimball the other day. He got the request from DEP. He's going to go back into his files and find what... But again, if there was something bad that had happened before, our testing would have shown it, right? Okay? Because the other thing is, Kevin is testing, the water goes off the site. I mean, so something would have popped up at this point.
And as I mentioned before, one of the things that, and I think I was responding to Mr. Minnie's question that never actually got the thought out, the area here, this large area here that was the clean fill that came over from Stratford High School, as we've justified, and to answer one of Mr. Glass's questions from before, that area needs to be handled. It needs to be removed and processed and placed and compacted in lifts. So, while they're doing that, while they're taking every bucket load of that material, if something pops up, they're going to address it. They're going to deal with it.
So, do I understand that you mean you're going to dig up everything that was put in there and look at it again?
It has to be placed in structural lifts in order to support a future building, yes.
Okay, well, that sounds...
With oversight.
All right, so we have some more questions from the commissioners before we go to the public. I don't think there's many, so let's start at my right again. I think Commissioner Panici has another question.
I have a question, and maybe, Rick, you could answer this for me. Because I understand that, I mean, I'm just getting information left and right here that are not filling in. A New England Material owned the property before.
That's yes.
Am I right?
Previous owner, that's correct.
Okay, and they were doing export material or quarry, is that right?
That's correct.
They have a permit to do that?
No.
So, that's... That illegal?
That is correct.
And would they ever find?
No.
Why not?
The previous...
Great question.
Thoughts?
So, it was a great question.
Okay. I'm trying to understand this. So, he was doing illegal operation, brought it to the condition that it's now, and then, before anything happened to him, he got rid of it, and somebody else picked it up. And now, we can't even go back for him to fix it. We're looking for the new owner to fix it. Am I right?
It's a fair assessment.
Fair assessment. So, we can't let that go. We can't let this guy does something, this company does something illegal, dumps it, another company comes in, continuously illegal, whatever, and it keeps on going, and it keeps on going. I have a problem with that.
I'm going to try to stop it now.
I think this application is trying to fix and write the previous...
How can you fix what the other... What the previous company did?
By virtue of filing this application. That's exactly what we're trying to do.
Kevin, with all due respect to you, somebody has to be accountable for doing an illegal operation without being fined. That previous company is going scot-free. Did they sell material and make money on it? Where did that money go? That money should go back to fix this site. Am I right? Am I right?
Well, that, that's your opinion.
It's not my opinion, that's the way things go.
Hmm. Well, Tom, I don't know if you were aware, but that happened, and then Mr. Karp bought it, and it continued to happen until we shut it down.
That is absolutely incorrect.
You weren't, you weren't removing material.
Well, no, go ahead. Commissioner Panici, finish first.
So that was my next question, thank you very much. So, when you picked it up, you seized it, did they, was he ever given a cease and desist?
The zoning department issued a cease and desist order.
New England Material?
No, that was there out of the picture.
They, they were never stopped?
That is correct.
The new owner, Mr. Karp, with all due respect to you too, you picked it up, did you do any, any illegal activity at all?
I will state, no, because we viewed.
Did you have a permit?
That we had, that we had a permit, yes.
Excavated and?
Yes, and the town also came to us as we were trying to get permitted and said, "Stop blasting." We said, "Fine."
They, they give you a permit?
Yes.
Who gave you the permit?
The town. Fire marshal's office, the, it, it, when, when, when.
Fire marshal's office only gives you a permit to blast?
Yes.
Correct.
Who gave you the permit to quarry and, and, and do, uh?
There was an active permit on the site that the previous owner had to build two industrial buildings. So all the activity that was going on on the property was being done under the auspice of that previous approval. Those previous approvals were still valid for a period of time when Mr. Karp bought the property. Mr. Karp bought the property, had a legal opinion saying, "These permits are still good until March of 2020," I believe. Or, so, so at the time, when Mr. Karp bought the property, we came in, we met with land use staff, we had the town attorney present, Mr. Karp's attorney was present. We talked through what the status of the permits were and what was going on, and we said, "We want to right this ship and put this property into a better place," and we were actively trying to do that under that old permit.
But when he was doing the blasting and the quarrying, he went beyond the elevation that would permit him to build a building?
That was, that's.
That's the prior.
Yeah, not, not you, prior, just.
Prior.
And nobody checked him and nobody did anything at that point. Were you involved with that?
I, I provided quarterly reports to town staff, and I acknowledged exactly how much material had come off the property, where the elevations were. Those quarterly reports went to the land use staff.
So you had a site plan, you had a site plan with elevation of existing elevation?
We provided, we provided a quarterly report that summarized how much material was removed from the property, that of course.
But you had a, you had a, a, a site plan or a survey that depicted the existing elevation and to the elevation that the new building that he was doing should go to?
We provided those reports to staff, yes.
And were you aware that he was going beyond those elevations?
We acknowledged it in those reports.
And who did you acknowledge to, to the, to the town?
Went to the land use staff, yes.
And land use had that information, and they never, they never did anything with it? Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Uh, not at this time, babe.
So, I saw a picture, the stuff going to left there, that's not, look like disturbed. Nope, keep going over more. What is all that?
That's, that's big with, that's undisturbed, that's woods.
That's woods?
Yes.
There's a site, I saw a picture, the site was a lot bigger than that, that it was like, like more of a open, like before it started being filled in.
All these, all these, uh, black dots and red dots, all this material here, this is material that's either, that was either overburdened, that was placed here, so this area, this area from, from, from this face to this face, this was all excavated down to.
So, because that picture looks totally different than when I saw it when it was bare, like that, when there was no fill in there. And so there's no other fill on that site that you're saying from that picture, there's no fill anywhere on that site other than where you're pointing to now?
Correct, yeah, you can.
You're saying that?
You can, it's there, Google Earth is great, you can go back and look at a.
No, I know, I know, I saw, I saw a picture where it showed, looked like there's, like, I'm gonna have to look at it.
That photo was from a year ago, right?
That's from a year ago, where's the?
This photo.
Not this one, the one before you were showing was from a year ago.
You can see the hole there.
Because the, the quarrying operation is.
Second hole is right there. No, but I was looking at a.
I think you might have been looking at when they, we, we received close up, more closer shots, they were in color, and then we were.
It looks like there was more closer.
Again, I think it only showed one, because this is two properties, I think it only showed one of the properties, so it might have.
You know, we, you know, we provided, we provided a, a, you know, we provided a summary in 2014 to the commission, we provided other summary.
Hey, I have the question, the question I have, you're, you're here with an application to try to fix a violation.
Yes.
Okay, and so, I mean, this is like, you know, and Mr. Karp says, you know, like, you know, that we don't require this and all these other things and all that kind of stuff, we're here to address the violation.
Right.
We're here to find out what fill material was bought in here before Mr. Karp. I asked you specifically if you had amount of what fill was bought in here, and you said you didn't have that, but there's a way for you to calculate that out, but.
Provided, in previous testimony in the previous.
I asked you last time if you had that amount, and you said you didn't have that. But I'm just saying that, so with the amount of material that Mr. Karp turned over to DEEP, and the amount of material that, you, I'm sure you can calculate it out, because you go back on Google Maps and find out how much material was bought in there, illegal, illegal fill, I'm talking that, that we didn't require, that we didn't authorize, that you could find out how much material was actually brought onto that property. And you, you have never brought that in front of us to tell us exactly how much material was brought onto that.
We actually did.
I, I don't know if I ever got that, or I never got it in this application, so, I mean.
I think it was the first one.
It could have been, I mean, but I just, it's been a while.
Carries over.
No, I'm saying, but I mean, for me to review it and to figure how much material that you gave to DEEP, I don't know how much material did you give to DEEP, and what was yardage and everything like that, we, we never got any of that, because.
Again.
You did the rockhead one. I'm just saying, because I mean, basically, I'm not, I'm not trying to hold you accountable for anything, but I'm saying to you is that this is, this is because of a violation.
Yes.
And when Mr. Karp bought the property, the violation continued to go on, because they were blasting, there was crushing, there was removing a material, and, and that's when the cease and desist came. So don't say that it didn't continue to go on, because it did continue to go on, am I right or not? Before we put a, a hold on it.
The activities that took place on the site were being done in accordance with the permits that were valid on the site at that time.
But the permit, and you know, as well as I know, that the property was already over excavated, excavated.
But Mr., but Mr. Karp was trying to get to a place to fix the problem.
You're still.
While he had the rights to do so under that.
I understand, but I'm saying, but you were still excavating the property at that time.
We bought the, we bought the property in May, and I believe in June, we actually asked the town to stop blasting, okay? Any of the work that we did largely was to take the rock that was loose out, thinking that we would be able to start this procedure much sooner. I don't think we sold, certainly not many thousands of dollars of crushed rock, uh, by, I wanna say, uh, September of that year, all the equipment was dismantled and sold. But again, this didn't happen without planning and zoning under a, uh, prior chairman, we were in, at least once a month with you at this table discussing what we were doing. The town, we bought it in May, and I think in June, no later than July.
It was before July.
They said, "Please stop blasting," and we said, "Fine, we have to do two blasts, um, to take the rock."
Address engine circuit.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, but I'm saying, Kevin, is, and, and I'm not, and Mr. Karp, and I'm just being honest about this, I'm saying is that we gave you a cease and desist from removing material and to bringing material in there, because that basically what was, was happening. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, under, under coordination with town land use staff. From day one of buying the property, we came in, we met with staff, we told them what was going on, we met with land use staff.
So.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission members and Regulations Subcommittee.
So you, you said that the staff or the Planning and Zoning Regulations Subcommittee, I know you met with us, but you're saying that we gave you a fill permit?
Absolutely not.
No.
I, I made notes like.
That's all I wanted to say, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the, uh, public, I'm just gonna review for my own self here. So DEEP, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, has the responsibility for determining whether this site is polluted or not. We do not have that responsibility, period. It looks like from this letter, DEEP is satisfied that the site is not polluted. Okay, that's the past. Inland Wetlands had hired, Mr. Karp paid for another, a review of the site. It doesn't sound like everyone has seen that review that Town of Monroe hired.
It's been a while, Mr. Chairman.
All right, to review this site. That's what Leon wants to do. It's already been done, I guess we haven't seen it recently, so let's, we're not gonna close the hearing tonight because the applicant submitted more information that we haven't had time to review, otherwise we might. So that's the past. The future, Inland Wetlands is already requiring that Mr. Karp, that we hire, and Mr. Karp paid for, a third party to review what's going on at this site going forward. With regular site reviews, visits, this third party that the town is going to hire at Mr. Karp's expense will do exactly what Leon wants. Done, already done.
And Mr. Karp's agreed to that?
Yes.
It's conditioned.
Part of the condition of approval for the inland wetland permit. Please, if you haven't read the inland wetland permit, read it, because they've already done a lot of the things that we talked about tonight. Going forward, quality of fill, it is our purview to make sure what goes in there is appropriate. We also, we have a protocol that they have submitted to us that is exhaustive and shows and swears, or at least they say they're only gonna bring in clean fill. We're also gonna be on the site to monitor this, a third party that we are going to hire, that they are going to pay for, will be there to monitor what's going in as it's going in. We owe it to the applicant to move forward on this application. This is a landowner that has rights to develop his property. We owe it to them to move forward, one way or another. So we're not gonna close the hearing tonight, because they submitted information that has to be reviewed by us. So that's the way I see it. So let's go to the public at this point.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the public, I just wanna make a couple of quick comments. That report that was submitted tonight was really presented by Derek, uh, Jones orally. So we're happy to withdraw that, that submission. We don't think you need to rely upon, he, that, that was just a, he just wanted you to see writing what he talked about, so.
That's not gonna happen, Mr. Finn.
Yeah.
Right, that's not gonna happen. Let's try.
Yes, you're consulting.
I, I wanna make a couple other points. First of all, I wanna, I did have a chance to read that Rusty Orenza report from Arcadis after I addressed you. I wanna tell you that the report does not say anything about his reviewing the testing. When I presented that to you, when I presented, I said, "I thought it said that, but I wasn't sure." Turns out, it doesn't say that. But I can assure you that when he addressed the Inland Wetlands Commission, that he did review the testing and say, testify before the Inland Wetlands Commission, that the testing was more than adequate, he didn't have an issue about it. And I see Mr. Ambrosi's smile over there. I'll tell you what, Mr. Ambrosi, I'm gonna try to get you the, the date and the time that he testified to that, so you can vet that, okay?
I can look at it.
All right, now, um.
It was in the Monroe card here.
But did he testify to that? Well, that's.
Natural.
Monroe, Monroe son.
Son.
Monroe's son.
For the record.
It's not, it's not in his written report, and I, I apologize for not being accurate about that, but, um, I'm glad that Mr. Chairman can remember that. And, uh, I hear you about keeping the hearing open, we're obviously disappointed, uh, you know, the intervenor intervened back in October 25th, and it is shocking to me that they're allowed to submit a document at 4:30 this afternoon, and this commission takes that into account. Don't think that's fair, but we went ahead, we're willing to close the hearing. I heard what you said, uh, Kushterman, I would.
My knee.
My, my knee, I apologize.
No offense taken.
So, but, but, you know, this is the time we see, we see that these things drag on and on and on, and what's the price? The price is the hole's not getting filled, and the other price is, is that the Inland Wetlands Commission, who wants these wetlands remediated, that is getting postponed and postponed and postponed. And I know you're concerned about the environment, and if I were in your seats, I would be too, but this has been fully vetted time and time again. You've got DEEP involved, and as Chairman O'Reilly indicated, it is, it is time to move on. So thank you for your time.
All right, we're going to move on. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission on this application, either for or against, or generally? Please come forward and identify yourselves.
Mm-hmm. Good to understand.
Good evening again, my name is Lois Spence, 29 Partridge. I believe it is your commission's right to demand another expert if you want one. It is not the applicant's place to say whether or not they'll do it. So you feel more comfortable having another outside expert, because the applicant's expert's gonna say one thing, the intervenor's expert's gonna say another thing, they work for different companies. If you need one for you to make you feel comfortable, do it, because the whole town relies on you. I have to disagree a little bit with the chairman, you don't owe it to the applicant, you owe it to the town to do the right thing. Their, their water supply depends on whether or not the fill is, and I've heard exhaustive testimony about how the quality of the fill, and I don't have any doubts about that, but you should, um, because it's your responsibility to take care of the entire town, public health and welfare, and the trust in you. So please keep, let that weigh very heavily on you. Why not test for leachables? I've heard it said, it's an easy test, and I also have heard it said in the wetlands meetings, that leachables are, uh, the fines are very, more likely to leach than larger rocks, and makes more sense, there's more surface area, there's more to leach. So get the leachables tested, this is easy. If they fight against it, maybe there's a reason, so let's make sure that the reason is not right. And I have to also disagree with Mr. Finn, I am on the Wetlands Commission, I'm a 15-year veteran on the Wetlands Commission, and one of the things he said is gonna hold up the remediation of the wetlands. That part of it should not even be considered, because the fill that they're putting in won't make any difference, if any difference, until five years from now, anyway, whether they start now, or they start six months from now, because the pumping that they're doing is hopefully, hopefully working, we don't know, and, um, so that should not be something to weigh, to push you into an uninformed or, uh, into a quick decision. So those are, um, yeah, those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spence. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Karen Veras, 99 Bagford Road. I'm not gonna reread the short letter that was sent to you from the Conservation Commission. Our board had approved it at our meeting last month, that urged you extreme caution in proceeding, extreme review of what could possibly have been put in, not currently, but previously, um, because you do owe it, as Lois Spence said, you owe it to the residents of the town, the ones living here now and the ones who'll be here in the future. To sum up on that, I would just, curious, the question was asked, do you, and I know that there were previous problems and this had gone on, uh, in the day, or what were there were previous problems and this had gone on, or did you, what were you getting going on? Do you actually know what was taken out and what was put in, and when the final material was actually taken out? Because the Conservation Commission had gotten a call on conflict, I believe this right before Rick Schultz came on board in February of 2019. And there it was filled, it was covered with snow, and we didn't trespass on the property, we were on the road, but you could see the pile stuff covered with snow. So my question is, and I, and I don't have an answer for it, but what actually was put in in the past, and when was it taken out? And I believe what, what profit had to made from what was put in and taken out? And I believe that there are a lot of considerations, and I do hope you, it's taken a long time, and it's not going to, I think, really, in this situation, before you make a decision. I thank you for all your time, and I wish you happy holidays and happy 2022.
Thank you.
You too.
Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Are there any members of the public online tonight that would like to comment on this Any members of the public online? If not, then we'll continue this hearing.
Just a, just one quick note before we continue the hearing. I just want to just kind of ask the commission one more time. Is there anything else the commission may like to see or hear from us that we can work on between now and the next meeting? So hopefully the next meeting can be very quick and pointed discussion about closing this application.
I have one quick question I forgot to ask. The samples given to Deep, I understand, came from the sites that we have. How much material from the actual 64 Cambridge was sent to Deep for testing?
This doesn't actually take soil samples.
Okay, so the samples that were requested came from the two outside companies.
So analytical data that was provided to Deep was a combination of tests that were submitted to Rockhead when people were trying to send material to the site.
Okay.
And additional analytical test, testing that was done by Rockhead's LVP, material that was on site.
Okay, so nothing actually came from the site?
Oh, yeah, oh, there were definitely, there were some analytical material that's on site. And in fact, the report I've been waving around was all analytical data from tests.
Okay, thanks, Evan.
I have a, I have a question. For staff, in the past, I seem to recall that there was a requirement for materials from a meeting to be submitted to the land use staff before the meeting prior. Is that still a requirement? Is that no longer a requirement? Because my concern is every time we have this meeting, we're going to get a stack of paper the day of, and it's a stall tactic at this point, without a doubt. And that's a problem, because we will never end this if this keeps happening.
Right. That's by design.
Yeah, absolutely, 100% it's a stall tactic.
No, absolutely, I agree with you, but now you have, you have WSP with a report, you-
It was done by both sides right now. Maybe accidentally, but-
I'm just saying, but now, but now, we have a WSP report from one side, we have another report from another side, and we also have the wetlands report from a separate interviewer. I mean, if we don't have the information now, you're not getting it. It's just, it's just not happening. So there should be no reason why the next, I mean, in my opinion, that the next meeting with the information that we have, I mean, if they're going to, I'll be honest with you, if somebody comes to me with information next meeting at the, at the 24th hour, I just put it, recycle it for me, please, because I have the information I need.
And my concern is, it was mentioned of a traffic study.
I can address that.
Now, is that-
So I can address that. Within our application materials and our project, our engineering memorandum, we provided a discussion on traffic associated with this fill operation. So that material is in there, we provided an estimate of the total number of trucks that would be required over the duration of the fill activity, how many a day, how many an hour, and, and concluded that this operation activity will not have any adverse impact in any traffic operation. So it's been addressed. You know, there were a number of things that were talked about that, oh, we haven't given you this. There was a statement by Mr. Glass that, you know, well, a hydrogeologist, hydrogeologist didn't tell you what the groundwater elevation is going to be after you place the fill. We submitted a report by a hydrogeologist that says exactly, conclusively, that that groundwater is going to be in full level. So, you know, the information's there, and that's kind of why I just wanted to ask one more time before we-
And that, and I want to make it clear, I wasn't actually asking you that, I wanted to make sure that, you know, when he's asking that, that's something that might come up again at the next meeting all of a sudden. So if that was something we wanted to request, we should request it now. Because without a doubt, there's a lot of information here, and some of it, I mean, I'm looking at this deep report. Back in 2019, the complainant mentioned that the current owner also owned or bought the house that Jennifer Dulles lived in. Why is he reporting that to Deep? Are we going to all of a sudden have a bunch of that information getting thrown at us for some reason? It just seems like it's, it's more and more nonsense, they're throwing stuff at the wall and hoping it sticks.
Okay, well, I think that might be the opinion of the majority of the commission. But we're going to continue this hearing until when?
January 6th, 2022.
Ooh.
We'll, we'll staff right on each thing.
6th.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have pending minutes.
Yeah.
November 18th.
Was that there, was that there?
November 18th.
Hold on. Thank you, I might have been there November 18th.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes on November 18th.
You were here. I was definitely there. Motion to accept the minutes on November 18th for the meeting that I was here for.
Second.
Motion on the second, is there any discussion of the minutes from November 18th?
It's, it's Mr. Sully, Mr. Sully, Mr. Sully. How come I can't get into the minutes at all? At least. It's all right, I had to have- I have no questions on the minutes.
Okay. No questions on the minutes, we'll call the roll, starting on my right, we have with-
Condon.
The regular members.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
The minutes are accepted. Second, we have the December 9th minutes.
Second.
And a motion to-
9th?
Accept. December 9th minutes.
I was not. I was absent.
And I think-
Nicole was seated.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the December 9th minutes as drafted. Second.
Motion, we have a second.
Can I second it?
Too late. Second it.
Already seconded.
Condon, yes.
Any discussion?
Sorry. Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Loufo, yes.
Yeah.
They're accepted. Okay, yes, I have a, on release, that would be the agenda. Update. Second it. A letter from Scott Chatslin, who is recommending that we release the bond. There is, yeah, he is. All physical work associated with the recurrence of the subdivision have been adequately addressed and completed. Chair, I'll entertain a motion to release the bond. I make a motion to release the bond, and the bond is SUV 2019-0104 Elm Street.
There you go.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion on the second. Discussion.
No, sir.
Not a call to roll.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, we are going to appoint a zoning enforcement officer.
I'll do it. I'm just kidding. Officer here? I'll just come, I'll do it. Where is he?
I, I asked him to do it on Zoom.
Who is he? I'll see him.
And he is not present.
Probably a slave boy. Stayed on? Probably not, but, where is he? He's not there? He's gone, Rick?
He was going to show up live.
Who was it, Mr. Ambrosi? No. But I'm saying, is he here? No, he's not here, right? Guess he's not here, right?
Who's the person?
You have to be here to appoint him, no, right?
No, no, we just need his accurate name to be-
Yes, accurate.
The pronunciation of this name.
Bia.
Bia.
On Bia.
B-A-I-A.
I've met Ron, and he's very knowledgeable, he's worked in zoning enforcement for-
All right, I'll let him do it.
Twenty years.
Yeah. Who came into-
Many years, many different types of situations, so-
In addition to the office.
Yes.
All right, he's in. But we got to make a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve Ron Bia as a zoning enforcement officer.
Second.
A motion, I have a second, is there any discussion? I'll call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes. Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Bia in.
Okay, commissioner reports.
Done.
I have no report.
Mr. Chairman, you wanted, the zoning regulations subcommittee?
Oh, yeah, we can do that when it's your- January 25th.
Okay. I, I have a determination, let me show you.
Are there any commissioner reports? The commissioners have anything they'd like to report of? No, okay, then go ahead, Rick.
Well, as part of the new subdivisions, I mean, the new applications that came in, one is a three-lot subdivision, commission has to make a determination if you want to hold the hearing. The last one, on Moose Hill Road, is determined not to have a public hearing.
You got to do this right now?
No. All right. Okay, this is 334 Cutler's Farm Road, and they are proposing open space.
So it's one property, they want to divide it to three?
Three lots, right. Right now, there's a house on it, they're going to retain the house, and there's water on that street, so they're going to hook up water.
Who are the neighbors? Is it Aquarion or no?
The neighbors are Towne Monroe to the back, so that's why they're adding open space to it. And the neighbor to the, to the right is Dickolo, and to the left is St. Justy.
Okay.
Three, four, three lots of, that's your call.
You can handle it?
Oh, absolutely, just like you did in Moose Hill.
Well, call the roll, signing my word.
I would, I would move to waive the public hearing.
Yeah, Wetlands made a favorable recommendation on it.
There's not, is there any issue with that? No, they're houses.
You guys notify the neighbors?
Yeah, notify the neighbors.
And Scott did a report to the Wetlands. It's pretty straightforward.
How much? Were the neighbors notified?
Wait a minute?
No, we're doing it now.
No, we didn't get a notification yet.
Are you a-?
But zoning does it.
No, but I'm thinking like the-
Zoning will do the notification, require it.
No, I think if there, if there's an issue, you'd come back to us and we would discuss making it up for the hearing.
You're going to see a whole presentation.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, as long as the neighbors don't have an issue.
As long as the neighbors aren't having an issue with it, Rick.
Yeah. Okay. Mayne?
Yes.
Westland?
Westland, yes.
You voted, you said yes.
I said yes.
Saying yes.
Mayne, yes.
Who made the motion?
I lost it.
Ryan did a couple of things.
What's the pending application?
That's something that we used to do, that just come back and agenda.
That's just for us to know, major item, right. That's interesting.
All right, Rick, you're up, I guess, right?
Yes.
Actually, Joe's going to do his report, you all have a copy of it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Hey, it's right there. Now I can follow along.
Okay, why don't I just give you the ones that you're probably going to need to sit in, and I'll leave out the rest of it. 337 No Turnpike, that's the house on the right-hand side that you had down the road. We're still waiting for a, the name of demolition contractor for the owner apparently had somebody, he got rid of him, he's getting somebody else. Health is still waiting for the CEPAC well abandonment and the asbestos inspection certification. We don't have that yet, we're still waiting on those things. Two other ones, we sent Moose of Trail and East Village, we sent registered certified letters, they returned unclaimed. I'm going to have to talk to the administration about what they want to do next. A little interesting, at least, 10 Victoria Drive, the project down there, the guard house has been placed in the location where it's supposed to be. Building has not yet received any kind of requests for inspections for hookups on that, so it's just sitting there at the location. They still have a guy in a truck watching everybody coming and going, just how they're monitoring that. So the guard house is inactive, but it is placed at least. No foundational work has been started for the 10,000 square foot building that's required, that's still inactive at the moment. There's been roughly anywhere from 13 to 24 vans parked on the site during the day, that's pretty typical of what we've seen, routine inspections.
Aren't they allowed to be there yet?
At this point, yes. There is still some site work going on out there, they're doing some essentially grading, a little bit of excavating, moving things around. The place is tidy, I have to say. It's, how much, how active it is during the day, I don't know, because I haven't been out that much, but times I've seen it, there hasn't been that much traffic in and out there. But they do have somebody monitoring at least during the day. Zoning map, we did a partial update on 1214. Essentially, that was showing the reclassification of four different lot, four different zone changes. There'll be further updates on that as either requests come in or we get information that require an update on the map. Another second family house come in. Other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them if you do. The Ken Twamley's project is moving forward, they're scheduled to close Purdy Hill Road, Cutler's Farm, 25 units. They're scheduled to close next week early. AJ Grasso is the developer, he is finishing up Hawks Ridge and Shelton, a large residential. And so he is moving forward on, on that. We did have a preliminary meeting with the developer and the two owners of the property. They're obviously both knowledgeable guys and seem to be with the program as for what they, what they need to do in order to move this forward or that, any kind of hiccup. So hopefully, that attitude will continue with them, you know, you never know, but at least it seemed helpful at this point. They're pretty excited, it's a 55 and older community, and they've gotten a lot of interest from the residents. So two things are going on in town, as you know, with, with the upcoming luxury apartments, capturing the empty nesters that don't want to live in their home, then we have people that still want to live in a dwelling unit attached, albeit, but with master bedrooms on the first floor. So you, you have these two market conditions going on in town.
So question on those luxury apartments, those are the ones going across from, that's correct?
The Ponview, yeah. 127 Main Street.
How close are they to being done with clearing that whole property?
Another year. It's, I've stepped it up though. From what I've seen, some of you might know Haynes is now involved in that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we don't have an idea of how much-
Really?
-involvement that they have. So we don't know how much that the prior operator is still involved with it, they turned the whole thing over, they're still involved. My understanding is that they are still involved, we have no documentation showing anything either way. From what I've seen from the submitted reports that we have been getting from solely engineering who's monitoring the amount of material removed from the site, it appears that they're looking at least another two years at the current rate of removal.
Okay.
And depending on market conditions, it could be more or less, but from what I'm seeing, they're a little bit more than halfway through what they, where they anticipated they would be in order to actually get it to a point. And, and commissioners, are there full compliance with the, with the grading? Obviously, I, I wouldn't show my face anymore if they went too low.
Well, that's what I was just thinking about.
Yeah, no, that is one thing that we- We get the monthly reports and it's reviewed and-
According to Mr. Sully, we got the monthly reports on, on Cambridge, too. You know, I don't mean that as a thing. You got to say it was a prior administration.
Yeah, but you're right.
As long as we have eyes on it, then-
Panera's moving a lot of dirt.
And, you know, you're not comparing apples with apples. This location, 127 Main, has residents in the back, and they're watching.
Oh, yes, we know.
Panera's moving a lot of dirt.
And, you know, you're not comparing apples with apples. This location, 127 Main, has residents in the back, and they're watching.
Oh, yes, we know.
The industrial park was in nowhere, no man's land.
Yeah.
We had one person.
My daughter's dancing.
What's, what's happening with Pepper Street?
Song involved.
How's that moving along?
Yeah, Pepper Street is, has the skim coat of pavement, and it was line striped. And the, the town right now is making the determination whether or not to allow Grasso Companies to do work during the winter months. That needs to be scrutinized. Because if you open up the road again, because you have to put in three culverts by Jackie Hall Road, if they do the work and for some reason they just walk away, it'd be a disaster. So the engineering department, right now, is considering the request of Grasso Companies to do winter work. We don't know how the winter's gonna be. But we are concerned, because the conditions are as best as they can be with the skim coat that was put down in the line striping. The residents have calmed down for the most part, because it was pretty disastrous, as we all know. A lot of complaints came in.
A lot of complaints there.
So i, i, if I were to make a recommendation, I would err on the side of caution and not to allow the winter work. I'm just concerned if, you know, it's backfiring on us. But that's a judgment call, but there's, there's three parties that deal with that. The state of Connecticut, the, the town, and obviously the.
Yeah, because that's grant money, right? Isn't that grant money? Was that grant?
A federal through the state, through the state of Connecticut. We did have a preliminary meeting with Panera, where they, we gave them a, the okay to go ahead and do earthwork at this point. I believe they've got an application in, as a matter of fact, I know they've got an application in, to building for the shell only. So that's what they've got approval for right now. So they can move the earth around, they could prep the site, they could put the shell up. But any further work than that requires further application. Yeah, and the, the blighted building for the right of it, too.
Wait, we approved them. For the building department, not to us.
Yeah, right, for the building.
No, we're not coming back.
And there's a blighted building to the right, Mr. Zawali owns it, and that is coming down. He has all the paperwork done. So we have two buildings coming down very soon.
Is that the one the fire department's using?
Yes, they stopped doing that, they were doing training.
Yeah, okay.
So that might come in front of us for something, too?
Yes. There's a lot of interest on Main Street. I mean, on Monroe Turnpike.
Any word on the additional sports fields that we're trying to do in Wolf Park?
Oh, yes, that was this updated. There are some changes. We're trying to save the town money, and we are moving in the right direction. It appears it's gonna be access two, which was originally approved. We're looking at other alternatives, and that doesn't seem the way it's gonna go. So we're going back to the original, which is through the parking lot. Instead of other access points.
Really need those fields.
Yeah, 100%.
Oh, and when's the rails to trail?
Yeah, Scott, as we speak, is finalizing the scope of services. Also, to the playscape, you just did the.
Looking for a date for the subcommittee, right?
Yes. Staff is recommending Tuesday, January 28th.
No, not Tuesday. Let's not.